So I think we have our full cast of characters. So Thursday, November 12, 6:31, I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and minutes are being taken by Gail Hunter Godhaper. So tonight, we're going to have a workshop meeting surrounding the 40B project that's been presented to the town. And I'm going to lay out a little bit about how we're going to go through the process of tonight's meeting, how we're going to break it up in a minute. Start with sort of a public service message and that surrounds COVID. And I'm going to repeat this message or something similar to it over the next few days. So we have started to see a little bit of an uptick in cases in Manchester. And there's been obviously an uptick in the state and the governor has put in place new restrictions to try to get a handle on the uptick and prevent us from running into more serious outbreak going into the holidays. For the most part, people in Manchester are doing pretty well in terms of managing their own personal spaces and adhering to the rules. We have had a couple of cases recently where that's not the case, some large gatherings, 25 people, 75 people, that sort of thing. And this is not something that's going to help Manchester, especially going into the holidays. Thanksgiving is going to be a vulnerable time for us. I know everybody is going to want to try to get together, or a lot of people are going to want to try to get together with family, but it's particularly risky time for us. So I'm really going to ask people to be mindful, remind others if they don't seem to be really doing a good job of social distancing or otherwise adhering to the mask rules or gathering in too densely populated groups indoors. That is really important for us to especially get through this season without causing a major uptick in Manchester and the rest of the state. We've done a lot over the past several months to protect the population and in particular, the population of Manchester. There's only so much that the board can do at this point. It's really up to the residents and I'd urge you all to consider each other. And it's not going to be that hard for us to get through this if we just follow some of the basic rules of masking and not gathering in too concentrated groups. I know that this is going to be a little challenging over Thanksgiving, but we'll get through it. And it'll be a better, sunnier day at some point, not too long from now, but we have to hold the line. So now as to tonight and the 40B project, so like I said, this is a workshop group. And I know there are a lot of people from the public interested. We've received a fair amount of public input. We're going to be breaking this meeting up into two essential sections. In the first section, we had some information given to us, a sort of a structural review of 40B process and what conditions we can impose, presented to or provided to the board by John Witten. And John Witten is here with us tonight. And so I mean, we're going to go over that structural review initially. And I'll get a few comments from John Witten on that. And then answer any questions from the board to John Witten about that structural overview. And then Town Staff has provided the board with a sort of a consolidated list of possible conditions that we could impose on the 40Bs for our consideration. This is not the complete list over the next coming weeks. There may be more items that are going to be added to it, but this is a list that's been developed in concert with consultation with Town Staff, reviewing other 40Bs and including some elements of issues that are raised by the public. And so we'll go through that specific list and we'll get some comments from the board members about, well, comments in general about how, which ones we might want to prioritize, which ones we might want to add to the list. We're just going to debate that list and I'll go through that list after, after we have the overview from John Witten. And then at the end, I'll invite some public comment. Now I'm going to ask that the public not flood the chat with questions and comments during the initial phases when we're getting a review from John Witten and when we're talking over the initial list. I'm probably not going to address those chat questions then, and I may lose them later if there's a large number of them. So like I said, there'll be some opportunity for public comment on this at the end, but I'm not going to break up the meeting dealing with public comment during the first couple of phases. And then on Monday, this is our next Board of Selectmen meeting, just to set some expectations for the Board of Selectmen. We're going to, we're not going to address the schedule of coming meetings or coming discussions about the 40Bs tonight. We're just going to be talking about the major areas of concern and the potential conditions tonight. We'll talk about where we might want additional areas of review by town boards on Monday in our 40B section of the meeting then, and we'll talk about potential schedule of next meetings on Monday. So that's not for tonight, that's for Monday. So that gives you the sort of the guardrails for what we are going to cover tonight. Mostly these conditions and the structural review by John Witten. And so with that, I guess, John Witten, if you could unmute, I'd like to, I'd like for you to give a short review of why it's important to us to, for us to reach an agreement with the developer or why it might be important for us to do so and an overview of the areas, a very brief overview of your overview and a review of the areas that are likely to be covered by the ZBA because the zoning board is going to cover in detail some of the concerns that people may have.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, and thank you and good evening, members of the board. So Mr. Chairman, let me start with this. Why, why should the Board of Selectmen, why should the town pursue or entertain a lip? And the answer is because the lip grants the town control. So if there is an applicant who's willing to submit to the local initiative program purpose and have the Board of Selectmen endorse the project, that endorsement becomes an agreement. It becomes contractual. The Board of Selectmen agrees to endorse this project, support the project if the applicant does the following things. The following things are the conditions that the chair is referring to. Why should the Board of Selectmen consider it? Because 40B is decisively anti-municipal. It is a statutory scheme that over almost 50 years, we know has punished cities and towns for not having the status of consistent with local needs, which generally is referred to having 10% of your housing stock subsidized below market. The Housing Appeals Committee is the adjudicator of disputes between Boards of Appeals and 40B applicants. And the Housing Appeals Committee decides for the applicant almost all the time, almost always. You can literally count on two hands, the number of times cities and towns are successful in defending a ZBA decision that either denies or upholds with several conditions, that comprehensive permit, if the developer appeals it. So the local initiative program takes a step toward getting the town in a position to get what it wants in exchange for an endorsement. But because the endorsement is so critical for the developer, the Board of Selectmen have an awful lot of authority here. If you don't want to give me your endorsement, you don't have to. And that means I have to go another route to seek project eligibility approval. That other route goes to mass housing. Mass housing routinely grants project eligibility approval for projects that are sometimes shockingly wrong and shockingly inappropriate. So there's a lot of incentive for a town to pursue local initiative. The Board of Selectmen's endorsement is not a permit, it's an endorsement. And because it's not a permit, the Board of Selectmen is not limited in requiring, requesting, demanding certain conditions of that endorsement. And those conditions can be well beyond the specifics of the project. Now, it's not a fishing expedition, but it does grant the Board of Selectmen the ability to say, as you would in any negotiation, here are the things the town needs, here are the things the town wants, here are the offsets to your project that we want as a condition of our endorsement. That's very different than the application to the Board of Appeals and the Board of Appeals approval or condition of a comprehensive permit. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to say a bit more about that, that distinction is really, really important. The Board of Appeals, when they adjudicate a comprehensive permit application, have very circumscribed authority. They cannot require the kind of things that the Board of Selectmen could require to obtain lip endorsement. So in one sense, the Board could look at this as your endorsement is being sought. What is it that the applicant needs to do for the town of Manchester to obtain that endorsement? The Board of Appeals, if an application is made to the Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit, is in the weeds, so to speak. They're looking at detailed plans or as detailed as the Board of Appeals can push the applicant to provide. They're looking at far more granular impacts of the project. At this stage, the Board of Selectmen is in a much more macro position, not completely, but more generally. So why a lip? Because the Board of Selectmen can set controls on the application to the ZBA. If it fails, it fails, but the Board of Selectmen are no worse off for trying. What is the breadth of the conditions the Board of Selectmen can require? Pretty much anything. And then, of course, it becomes one of negotiation. If you ask for the moon, the developer is going to walk away. So it's going to require some rational pushback and some rational renegotiation. But at the end of the day, the Board of Selectmen's support endorsement is being requested and that doesn't come cheap. That's a very important endorsement. And then one final thing, Mr. Chairman, I'll stop. If the Board of Selectmen were to endorse this lip project, that endorsement is in the form of a letter, a motion, and of course, a letter. That letter then goes to the Department of Housing and Community Development. If DHCD approves of the Board of Selectmen's endorsement, DHCD will issue the project eligibility letter. And this is really important. That project eligibility letter becomes the ticket, literally the ticket to the Board of Appeals. If the project eligibility letter has built-in conditions of approval or built-in requirements, conditions precedent or conditions subsequent, the applicant must comply with those because your endorsement is now become part of the project. So most developers that go through the lip process in good faith anticipate exactly the conversation that you're going to have tonight and anticipate that the Board of Selectmen, if you do grant endorsement, is going to have strings attached to it. And for most developers, they're comfortable with that because what they've obtained is your support. And because you're the chief elected officials, your support generally carries throughout the town. It doesn't mean boards are going to walk lockstep in what you decide, but as a general rule, you're the chief elected officials and it usually goes from there. So that's the theory, Mr. Chairman. It's a very valuable endorsement that you're being asked to provide. And as a result, you get to condition that vote and that endorsement in the best interest of the town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Witten. So to remind members of the public, the process of pursuing this endorsement is, as I said before, going to involve working with the town boards to evaluate the potential conditions and also to continue to work with residents to evaluate their concerns and see whether or not we can come up with a set of conditions that we think will ultimately make the project as palatable as possible to the town. And so we'll just work our way through this process and see where we end up. So members of the board, I'd like to open it up to you to ask any questions you may have of John Witten and the town administrator and Sue Brown about, about this more structural aspect. So I don't want to get into the nitty gritty of details of specific conditions, like they would list and things, sort of like things that are on Greg's list, but on the structural aspects and the process that John Witten gave an overview on.
Yes, Eli, I have a question for John. Yes, John, so thank you for that cogent and succinct explanation. I have a question about conditions in general because I think a lot of our discussion may revolve about various studies or analyses that we'd like to have done so we can better understand what the impact is of a project of this particular size. And we don't know what the results of those particular studies will be. And we don't know what kind of mitigation is going to be needed to resolve whatever those findings are. And that becomes kind of a blank check or an open issue that we may say, we would like to have this. And how does the developer, how do developers in general look at something like this? Because I assume they probably have some sort of a line that they say, this is what we can afford. And they try to attach numbers to that.
Right, Mr. Ronda, excellent question. And what I'd say is this, a developer that seeks lip approval knows that the Board of Selectmen is going to have this conversation and is also going to know that the Board of Selectmen is not in the position to list out conditions at this point in time. In order to know what conditions to impose, the board needs to be armed with the data that you need to have to know whether that intersection needs improvement or that parcel of open space is being impacted or that sewer line is being impacted. And you're not in a position of doing that because you don't have that, that's that data. You might have some, but you don't have all. So what typically happens is the Board of Selectmen would say, we'll consider lip approval, but we need $50,000 for a wastewater study or a stormwater study. We need $15,000 for an INI study and we need $30,000 for a fiscal impact study. I'm just making that up, of course. Those studies then have a short turnaround time. And once those studies come out, then the BOS has a sense of, okay, we don't have a problem with stormwater, but we do have a problem with wastewater or with public safety. So that informs your decision-making in terms of what to request before endorsement. Now, a developer who's been through this before won't give you two years to do that work, may not even be willing to give you a year, but if they're acting in good faith, have to give you at least a reasonable period of time to get that information. So part of, part of the process now is what do we need to know, what don't we know? And then what kind of money is going to be needed to inform us as to what we need to know? And that's typically related to infrastructure. So whether it's again, stormwater or INI for the sewer. The developer will not give you a blank check, you're absolutely right. But the developer must realize that they have to give you seed money to get answers to those questions. And one of the reasons I'm so confident in saying that is if this, if I were speaking to the Board of Appeals right now, if the members of the BOS were the Board of Appeals, what I would say is you have the authority to require the developer to pay the town so the town can hire its own third-party consultants to do the exact same work. So the developer of a lip is in no worse position for paying for those studies now than they would be if they paid at the ZBA level. It's not duplicative, it's actually very helpful for the developer. And then if I, if I could, Mr. Ronda, just add one more piece. When a developer completes an infrastructure improvement, they're improving their project. They're paying to improve their project because their project is the one impacting INI or stormwater or intersections. So it's not as if they're paying the town for some irrelevant improvement. It's an improvement that actually is self-serving in a holistic sort of way. So most good developers don't fight that kind of analysis because it's actually benefiting their project in the long run. It's a matter of degree and I think it's a matter of reasonableness and that's the negotiation part. Maybe the BOS wants five studies, the developer is only willing to pay for three, and that's part of the negotiation.
Eli.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I think so. I'm clear about the front end because there's a finite amount of time where you can come up with numbers that you can assign for various studies or analyses or expert opinions. The mitigation part of it, that comes later. And you're saying that maybe they'll say, we're not sure what the mitigation is, but we're willing to put X toward that.
Exactly, and because the Board of Selectmen doesn't have to solve the problem now, you're just setting the stage of conditions. One of the conditions is the applicant shall pay towards the study to be performed at the Board of Appeals level or shall provide improvements through the Board of Appeals comprehensive permit process. So you're laying the groundwork for the ZBA to do the, again, the granular work that you really can't do now because you're 1,000 miles above the project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. John, I just, I understand the, what the 40B is and how, how it functions to a certain extent. But why would, why would a developer even care to do a friendly 40B as opposed to just saying, we don't need to do a give and take, this is what we want and we're going straight to the state?
So excellent question, Ms. Jake. So here's the real answer. And you know, I would say this whether the developer were listening or not, it's just a truthful answer. And the answer is this, unfriendly 40Bs can drag on and on and on and on. I've represented the town of Middleborough since the year 2000. We're in our 20th year for 40Bs. I can give similar examples in Marshfield and Duxbury, 24 years. So a developer who has a long game in mind, perhaps, but that's a pretty long game. So a savvy developer, a developer who wants to work with the community and not antagonize the community and develop a product that the community needs or the region needs is always better off with the lip process because by getting your endorsement, it presumes the ZBA understands you vetted it. And then the ZBA may play hardball and be very aggressive, but at the end of the day, the theory is the ZBA will support the support the Board of Selectmen granted. It's a bit of a calculated risk, but, but I'll say this, and this isn't a threat or, or unsubstantiated comment. Developers that go the other way sometimes have an easy time of it, but more often than not, they don't. And it's a pretty ugly process for everyone. It's not a win-win, it's a lose-lose. A lot of money is spent and a lot of projects never get built. So a developer who wants to put a shovel in the ground, as developers like to say, we would much prefer to go this route because it's reaching some sense of compromise early on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Witten, just to, so when, in the case of an unfriendly 40B and the case where it drags on and on, is it typically the case that the town ends up bearing a bunch of legal expenses along the way?
So yes, I mean, I think the town has to assume that it'll be the Board of Appeals decision that's being appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee and then to the court system. However, in most of these cases, it is typically the other party that causes the developer the heartache and that is the abutters. Because one of the nuances of 40B, which is somewhat mind-numbing, but it's really important. When we're at the Board of Appeals level, Board of Appeals will render a decision. That decision is appealable by the developer to the Housing Appeals Committee, a very unfriendly forum for cities and towns. But in a butter to the project within 300 feet of the locus who has standing, appeals to Superior Court or the land court. That appeal is automatically stayed by operation of law if at the same time, the developer appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee. So the Housing Appeals Committee matter can go on for years. Town of Stonem, we waited three years for a decision from the Housing Appeals Committee. All the while, the abutters' appeal is stayed. So once the developer finishes with that, with the town, if the developer finishes with the town through the HAC, the Superior Court, and then the appellate courts, then they now have to start from the beginning with the abutters' appeal. And the Superior Court system in the Commonwealth is not all that expeditious, as most of us know. So it is, Mr. Chairman, it is the town that is bearing the initial brunt continually, but it is also the abutters that the developer is aware of have their own appeal that can put an awful lot of time and legal pressure on the project. So it's just not a good position to be in if you're an applicant. You have your own appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee and you're going through that process. At the same time, you've got in a butter appeal or a butters' appeal that just sit there unresolved until the Housing Appeals Committee matter and all the appeals that flow from there are resolved. And we're not even talking about appeals of Conservation Commission decisions, Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program decisions or any other federal or state permit that's required. So it's a, it's a, it's a very long drawn-out process if one doesn't go the more friendly route.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the board, Jeff and Ann.
Hi. Are the, can the abutters, Mr. Witten, can the abutters appeal even if the selectmen have offered a letter of endorsement?
Yes, so great, great question. Your, your decision, your endorsement, your negotiations is not appealable because you're not issuing a permit. However, the Board of Appeals will be issuing a decision that is appealable even if, appealable by the abutters, even if the Board of Selectmen endorsed the project. Yes, excellent question. You cannot, you cannot forestall in a butter appeal through your negotiations with the applicant.
So the, the order would be, we issue a permit, the ZBA issues a permit, and then the abutters' appeal?
Yes, so you issue an endorsement, so it.
An endorsement, I'm sorry, yes.
No, that's okay. It'd be a letter of support. Now the application, once the project eligibility letter from DHCD is issued, application goes to the Board of Appeals through a very detailed process. The Board of Appeals issues a decision. Once that decision is filed with the town clerk, both the applicant and the abutters will have 20 days to appeal that decision. Applicant's decision goes to, or applicant's appeal goes to the Housing Appeals Committee. Abutters' appeal goes to the trial court. And the abutters' appeal is active or alive regardless of the Board of Selectmen's endorsement. But Ms. Harrison, you are getting to one of the comments that I did want to make at some point this evening, which is one of the conditions the Board of Selectmen can consider and other towns have and DHCD has supported, which is an understanding that the applicant will not appeal the Board of Appeals decision to the Housing Appeals Committee. It's a perfectly rational and reasonable condition and it's a really important one. And an applicant that wants to work with the town to negotiate a project that's good for the town will agree to a condition like that. Because what good is all the work you're about to put into this if the applicant's simply going to appeal their decision, the ZBA's decision to the Housing Appeals Committee? Something for the board to consider and I'm happy to talk more about that. If the applicant's simply going to appeal their decision, the Z B A's decision to the Housing Appeals Committee, something for the board to consider and I'm happy to talk more about that.
Jeff, any questions for Mr. Whitten?
I think the advantage or disadvantage of going last is that most of the questions that I have been answered or posed. So I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna ask any further questions.
Okay. Well, then I think I'm going to move us on to the next phase of tonight's meeting. And start discussing the more concrete list of possible conditions that Greg submitted to us. Again, this is not comprehensive or necessarily the, the final list by any means. It's a starting point for us to have discussions around. And the way I'm going to do this, I'm going to I'm going to go through the list and roughly read them off for everybody. And then we're going to discuss them at the board level. But to start out with, I'd say that we've received a lot of communication from residents over the past couple of weeks. And broadly, they, they, a lot of the communications fell into say, five major groupings. First concern was, well, I actually call it six. So, so a lot of people just said they didn't really want the development in town and as we said, that that's, that's not really an option for us to negotiate at, at the board level for whether or not the forty B is, is going to be in town. But the first major concern that was in, it was in the wrong place. It's an environmentally sensitive area and it's out of character and too, too large. Second major area of concern is stormwater concerns how we're going to handle the, the runoff from such a, a large development. Second is the impact on the, the water and sewer for the town. Third, sorry, I already said two things. Fourth item would be traffic impact and parking in town. And then the fifth is really generally the financial impact. Financial impact due to increased burden on fire and schools and the general infrastructure for the town. Now, I know that doesn't cover everybody's really detailed concerns, but those are the major areas of concern that, that we saw in the letters that came to us. Now, so the, the list that we have tonight is about eighteen items. And I'm just going to go through these quickly for folks. The first item on here was, and these are, these are possible conditions that we might try to impose and negotiate with the developer. Or reducing the size of the goal, reduce it in terms of the number of floors and the number of apartments and preclude any future additions and expansions. Two, redesign somewhat to fit the character of the town. So change the facade with slope roofs or, or other architectural details that might make it fit the character of the town better. Three, lead certification, high energy efficiency improvements. Anything that makes it a little bit more green-friendly to the town. Four, traffic mitigation. So potentially an annual contribution to the town shuttle, to a town shuttle run by KDA, for example. And we can discuss the details of that later. Five, no net gain in stormwater runoff from the property. Again, this will be one of those conditions where we provide broad instructions to the Z B A and they would handle the details. Six, retaining forest vegetation and planning heavy screenings between the development and M E C T lands and generally make the thing less visible. Seven, place a permanent conservation easement on the remaining unbuilt lands. So that's eighteen or more of the twenty-three acres or so. Eight, put constraints on the, the blasting chemicals and require extensive monitoring of structures against damage from blasting. Now, that one actually is in response to a comment that came in from residents. There, there were some concerns that blasting might have effects that go far beyond immediate area of, of the project based on some previous experience. Let's see, nine, providing payment for water main extension along School Street and across the one-twenty-eight overpass to the site. Ten, sidewalks, constructing sidewalks from the existing sidewalk on School Street south of Route one-twenty-eight. Eleven, make a contribution towards the purchase of a new ladder truck. Twelve, make a contribution towards the CPC Land Conservation Fund. Thirteen, make a contribution toward the new Sweeney Park Turfield project. Fourteen, provide some proof of annual inspections and full current permit compliance with the onsite wastewater system. Fifteen, provide a local preference for the affordable unit. So in other words, they give a, a local residents a first, first chance at renting units there. Sixteen, agree not to appeal the agreed-to conditions to the state. That's what Mr. Whitten mentioned earlier. Seventeen, provide payment of all the professional fees and expenses for engineers, architects, landscape, architects, et cetera. I think Mr. Whitten alluded to that earlier as well. And eighteen, payment towards the impacts is determined by the board's experts above. So for example, if we need intersection improvements due to traffic impacts. So that's our starting list and now I'm going to ask board members if, if they have, well, they can, they can, you can pick any of these items out of here and express opinions on them. I want to, I want to allow it to be free-form and if I feel like the conversation's bogging down too much, I'll, I'll just prod gently and we can move on.
I do.
If I could, thank you, Becky. I, I think that part of the task here is to this is an extensive list and part of the task here is to prioritize the various contributions to this list. And I'm I know that we've got different areas that we're addressing. But I think that maybe we could start with the construction areas themselves. That would be, I don't know, things like item five, the runoff. Eight, damage from blasting. Nine, water main extension, those kinds of things. I think if we, if we could start in that area, that might be, that might be helpful to get this conversation going. So it doesn't meander all of the place.
Okay, so you're proposing that we talk about specific expenses or?
The impact, the impacts of the construction of the project itself.
All right, I see.
So the actual process of constructing this project. And then we could broaden it out from there to the impacts on town services. So that we can start to put our ducks in a row for what kind of consultations are we going to need?
Impacts of the construction and impacts to infrastructure.
Town infrastructure.
Yeah.
And, and services, I mean.
And district in impacts.
School district.
Yeah.
Those are the tough, those are tough, those are tough to ascertain.
Yeah.
And they're tough, tough if we're talking about any potential reduction or change in the numbers of units, then, then all of those things get affected as well.
What?
In terms of impact studies that we would get.
Yeah. What I am concerned about is in both the, the financial impact and the traffic impact. The, the proposal has a list, has lists of what they call comparables, comparable projects, which ranges, range in size from somewhat smaller than this to enormously larger than this. And in, in, I think, certainly in the case of the schools, the number of students per unit among their sample ranges, you know, from range of ten to one. So I would like us to be absolute, to be, to add to the list that we study or have someone else provide statistics on the likely impact on the schools.
And again, wouldn't that be based on the number of units? So we need to kind of, right?
We, we can come at that from two directions. If, if the impact on the schools is going to be high, that's a good reason to lower the number of units. If we lower the number of units, then maybe we don't need to look. But if, but I think if we're asking them to pay for studies, we should ask them to pay for a study at their proposed size.
Absolutely, yep. But they pay for the people we want, right, to do the study?
Yeah, they've already paid for the people we don't want.
Yeah, or at least the ones they do want.
And, and perhaps in the issue of the environmental area, the septic system and wastewater, I don't think any studies have been done. There wasn't any in the application. That was really kind of a big hole there. So I think that really needs to be covered right from scratch, although I believe the developer said a lot of that is driven by D E P requirements.
Yeah, and the other thing is, so let's be honest, so the developer could have spent a whole bunch of engineering costs in producing a plan for, for sewer upfront. But they, they probably expect us to ask them to reduce the number of units. And so if they put a lot of design work into a sewer system, it would need to be redone after that. So and we can get some advice from Mr. Whitten on this, but there are ways of us constraining the, or, or giving some direction to the Z B A the sewer that don't require us to dig too deep into the weeds on that at this point.
Sewer or septic?
Sorry, septic. Yeah.
Yeah, as, as John said, we didn't, John Round, we didn't really get a lot of information on what they were proposing, nor did we actually see what they, what building would be put up for that as well as how much land for leaching field, et cetera.
Yeah. I had, you know, I have three major concerns. One is the environmental issue, septic and wastewater, et cetera. The other one is traffic. And the third one, which I think is a driver for much of that, is the building appearance in terms of its size and character. And if we shoot for something with regard to, I assume, and Mr. Whitten, perhaps you might comment, that every developer goes into this with a number, knowing that that number's going to change.
Absolutely.
Okay, and so, I mean, they've got a hundred and sixty units here and that's four floors. And if we reduce that by a floor, and I know that there are many people, me included, and looking at the you know, with the, the structure and the appearance of that building from a distance with four floors, it sticks up there. I wouldn't mind taking a floor off of that. And, you know, the roof line, which I think was mentioned by, I think was mentioned in the list. I, I would prefer a roof line. The building looks a little too utilitarian right now. But I, I think that we have to go into this saying, let's, let's reduce this number. We still have to say, we've got, we've got to be above the number that we need with affordable housing. I would not feel comfortable going below about a hundred and twenty because we need a hundred and five or a hundred and ten to make this qualify for our affordable housing cutoff. And then kind of tag everything else based upon that specification that we would deal with. If they can put together a bigger footprint and get it down even another floor, I'm happy with that, but I know that there are certain fixed costs with the, with a foundation that may not make that plausible for them. But, yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I actually, before we go any further down this road, I have a question probably for John Whitten. And the question is, I've, I've had a lot of, excuse me, people reaching out. And Eli brought this up, that, you know, that, that this is the wrong place. Is there ever an option to say, propose a land swap with a developer? I'm not implying that we even have something that would be possible to use and all that undoubtedly would go to town meeting. But is that something that's ever done, John?
Yes, not often. It's currently on the table in the town of Stonem and it has been for a number of years. It hasn't been successful to date, but those conversations are still going on, which is to those of you that know Stonem, it's on the proposed forty Bs, two-hundred-and-sixty-four units on Franklin Street. And the proposal is to literally swap the Franklin Street property for town-owned property closer to I ninety-five. So yes, it's just complicated, but yes, there's no, you're in negotiations. So anything that is proper is a proper item to negotiate, yes.
And so these, these developers, there, it's, it's, this is a, a moneymaker for them because of the units that are not subject to affordable housing. Those are at, at market rates. Is that correct? So that's where the moneymaker is for them?
Well, also, the, also, it's another misnomer about forty B is on a for-sale project, the below-market units are actually very dramatically reduced in terms of their sale price. On a rental project, the eighty percent of median target is still a very expensive rental unit. It's not, not this developer's fault, it's the programmatic problems in the Commonwealth. So there, there's, there's revenue aplenty in forty B rental projects, both with the below-market and the market rate units. And of course, the below-market units are at twenty-five percent of the total, so seventy-five percent of units are at market rate. And just if I could, Mr. Chairman, just one quick comment. I, I've never met a developer in my entire career throughout the country, ever, who applies for the number of units that they want. They apply for the number of units that they know will then be a negotiation with the regulatory body. And this is no exception.
Yep. Put differently, they expect us to negotiate down.
Yes.
Before we go further, I, I want to make a kind of a procedural comment. So earlier on, I said I was not going to be addressing a lot of comments that come up in the chat during this first couple of phases. And regardless, people can't help it, they're, they're putting a lot of comments in the chat and there's, there's so, so ordinarily, in a public meeting, if this were in a room in Town Hall, side conversations wouldn't, wouldn't be happening. But I understand that they sort of can in the chat without actually interrupting or disrupting a meeting in the world of telemeetings. There's a challenge with this that we're still working through and there's, there's just the issue of And there's, uh, there's just the issue of going back and, and capturing and dealing with those questions. But there's also this, this funny little issue where people get into these little conversations with each other in the chat. And, um, I guess it's okay if people want to do that, but I, I want people to understand that it's going to be very hard, bordering on impossible for me to go through at some point later on and pick actual questions, uh, out of there that are, that ought to be raised and addressed by the board. So if you want to put questions up in there in the chat, I'll try to get to them later. But if you have conversations back and forth in which the context is a little bit hard for me to, um, understand, I am, I'm not gonna, um, be able to address that and I won't. And, um, yes, I can disable the chat, but right now I'm not going to because I, I think there's still potentially some value in it. If it gets out of hand, then I will. All right. Um, continuing to move on now, I understand, uh, that this is a bit free form. Uh, very free form conversation at the board level. This is part of the challenge that we have with, with doing this process entirely in public meetings. The board, uh, we have to work through this process now we want to do and deal with it in these meetings. And, um, so there is going to be, uh, some inefficiency in these discussions. And I think we just have to deal with that for these first few meetings. It will get more structured as we go on. I will try my best to, to keep this as structured as we can. All right. Uh, so, um, so let's talk about, um, so, so earlier on Jeff, uh, had a discussion around possibly breaking these categories and the impacts of construction, impacts, the infrastructure, impacts, services. And I, I guess I would like to, uh, talk a little bit about, um, uh, impacts to, um, services if we can. So there are some, uh, items in here that have been discussed in the past. Uh, fire, school, um, police. Do board members have, uh, comments on the prioritization of, uh, such things as asking for more money for ladder trucks or, or, uh, discussing, um, finance, financial impact to, um, fire department staffing?
Boy, those are two really different things.
All of this, Eli, still goes back to the size of the project.
Well, all right.
Is the chief on Eli?
Uh, I don't believe he is.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I know he said that, um, that the, the, the four story, we don't have a truck to deal with that. But if it were a three story, do we have something, um, that could handle that? Even though we do need a new truck, I know that already, but, um.
But not replacing it with something enormous. That's for one project.
Right. And that's just it is, as John Witten said, Mr. Witten said, and my apologies, I keep saying John because I've, I've had the pleasure of, uh, being acquainted with John through planning board. So it's been many, many years, but, um, that we can, if we stick to asking for things that are directly impacted by the development, we're more likely to be successful. At least that's what I believe John was saying. I mean, Mr. Witten.
Uh, John is, is perfectly good. Yes. I mean, I, I think part of it is, part of it is again, the negotiation process. So if, if these are conditions that the Board of Appeals are going to impose regardless, and the Board of Selectment is simply requiring or requesting the information now, yeah, I totally agree. It, it is in the developer's best interest to provide that information now because it's going to be helpful to get your endorsement and then they can use it again at the ZBA level of five or six months from now.
All right. So one thing we do keep coming back to is, uh, size of the, the development and number of units. So, um, seems like, um, that's a relatively high priority item for, for us, especially since, um, Mr. Witness also indicated that the developer almost always expects towns to come down. It's also been one of the major concerns from residents. Virtually everybody says it's too large, besides saying it's too big and we don't want to hear, hear it at all. So I think it's probably safe to say that that's one of our larger, um, concerns. I think, thought it was pretty interesting, uh, the comment that, uh, changing the size of it also, potentially adjusts the impact to, um, fire department and other services. So, uh, one of the things areas that we might want to consider, asking the other departments is, um, at, at what size does it reduce the impact to, uh, the, their infrastructure? Uh, or we can simply, um, propose a number to them and ask them to look at that. Um, now, uh, I guess I'll ask Sue Brown to address the, uh, number unit, units that we think we would need in order to, um, limit the ability of another 40B to come into town. So part of this business is if we have enough units in this development, then, uh, that takes us to our 10% cap on, on affordable units. And, uh, then we don't have to worry about another 40B coming into town. So, uh, Sue Brown, can you address that?
Sure. Sure. Thanks. Um, so currently we are at 5% with 115 units. So, um, we need 230, 228 to 230 units, um, based on our, on the 2010 census. Um, so that means, um, when the new census comes out, we're projected to be, um, just slightly higher in that we would need around, um, 235 units maybe. So based on that, um, I think 120 units is kind of the, the break in even point, point that would put us at safe harbor for the foreseeable future.
Eli, may I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Becky.
Sue, is that 235 right at 10% or does that put us a little over?
That, that really puts you at 10%.
Okay.
So would it make any difference if, um, there were the, this, this development were to have slightly more than 25% affordable?
It, um, it doesn't, um, because it's based on regardless of what's affordable. And we know 25% is the minimum. Um, all of, all of them are counted. So, um, we're already getting the maximum credit that we can, um, for the number of units, all of the units.
So even though it doesn't do anything more for us in terms of actually solving the problem, having more afford, a larger percentage of affordable doesn't give us any additional credit.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So one question is whether or not 120 units actually chops the floor off.
I, I have a question for Sue. Um, so if you come up in just under, then we're in jeopardy.
Well, you, you do have, um, so you also have the two year, um, window just by making considerable progress. And 120 units would certainly be considerable progress. So you would, you would get several years. Um, I do believe that, I do believe that we're going to make progress on some of our other affordable, um, housing projects, although they're not a given. It's nice to have a little bit of a, a little bit of a buffer for certain.
But we, we, we could get, yes, you've got other projects that might be two or three or four or something that would be, would, would, would certainly, uh, cover any, any shortfall.
Right. We, we're actually looking at a number of unit, we're, a, a current feasibility study that we're doing is looking at, you know, in the area of 30 or more units, which would be, which would then give us a, a really nice buffer. But there's no guarantee that it's not done until it's done.
Okay. Trying to, uh, kind of move us through to find the next set of priorities. So, um, I'll go back to, um, John Round who expressed, um, the three categories of environment, wastewater concerns and traffic concerns. Uh, where do board members, how, how do board members feel about the issue of traffic? In general, traffic mitigation, traffic parking, um, and where does that fit into your priorities?
Eli, it's in my, my top three, not necessarily number one. I think the septic, uh, the environmental things are number one. But, um, I think that the developer did say that he would undertake some additional traffic studies at the, uh, um, intersection of school and pleasant, which I have a concern about because that was not even mentioned in the study that is existing. And I would like to see that. I'm also concerned about commuter parking. If there are people from this location that are commuting, um, there should be some sort of mitigation with regard to a shuttle or some, some sort of transportation where they don't have to drive a mile just to park their car. So I'm, I'm interested in, in what might be done along those lines. And the mitigation associated with Pleasant and, um, Pleasant and School Street. I think it's, it's a problem now. And so it's, it's only going to get a little bit more difficult, COVID notwithstanding.
And your concerns there are really around like the, the morning traffic.
Exactly. In other words, most of the day, I don't think it's a major issue, but there certainly in the morning and maybe, maybe we need a policeman there every day for a half an hour or an hour or something.
All right. Other members have comments on traffic and let's, let's go ahead and group, um, things such as sidewalk, um, support into, uh, this particular item. Traffic parking sidewalks, commuter support.
I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of getting a sidewalk that goes all the way. There should be a sidewalk. I think the sidewalk ends at 128, correct? Or maybe before that. No, I guess it goes there.
It's kind of marginal.
Yes, I think it is.
Any other comments on, um, uh, traffic from board members? All right. So.
I have a comment, which is, um, sidewalks are, are, um, an interesting concern. But I don't think you're going to see people walking from this project to Memorial School. That's about 1.7 miles. And, um, that would come under the, um, school district's requirement for, um, providing busing. I think it's everything over one and a half miles is their current limit unless they raise that. But the school bus would need to stop there. For Memorial, not for, not for, uh, not necessarily for the high school.
Right.
As long as you're making notes on this, I think a even more useful than a sidewalk would be a, a safe bike lane. Because 1.7 miles is an easy bike ride. Unless of course, you're riding in traffic.
But not getting back up that hill again.
Hey, I grew up on Spy Rock Hill.
But I agree with you, Anne. I think that we need to look at bike as well. Under the traffic and parking and sidewalks.
So if we wanted to sort of generalize this, it, it really asks for a little bit more of a holistic view over the, um, topic of travel. And, uh, uh, what, what would be or could be the appropriate mix of, um, shuttles versus bike lane support versus, um, uh, the impact to intersections from traffic. Maybe that and, um, and sidewalk usage. And maybe that, um, is something that could bear a little bit more, um, input from, uh, experts as a large group instead of just having experts take care of the, um, traffic study alone.
So. Especially the parking downtown. And as John said, commuter parking and then potentially down to singing beach.
So Sue Brown, I'm going to lean on you here a little bit now. So we have in the past couple of meetings talked about this from the perspective of having a traffic study. Is it reasonable or feasible for us to, um, uh, find somebody to do a, a more holistic, overview of this problem?
Sure. Um, so I think, um, first of all, I do know that the applicant transportation engineer is looking at the Pleasant Street. They've been in touch with the school and myself to try to find other transportation studies that, um, involve the Pleasant Street, um, intersection there. So that is going forward and hopefully they'll be able to find enough counts and enough information to provide some information on that intersection in that area. I do think it's, um, yes, um, there are consultants that will look at it more holistically. Beta comes to mind. They're, um, very much about, um, you know, cycling and walkability in addition to, um, different modes of transportation. So I think that's not a, that's not a far reach.
Okay.
When we're doing the studies, would it make sense to consider the impact at 120 units and the impact at 157 to give us some more, uh, I, ammunition is a kind of a hard word, but more reasons to ask for a smaller project?
John Witten, um, that's kind of a, a strategy question that you, you might be best to answer here. So.
So ab- absolutely. It's an excellent question. Absolutely. Because all the information that the BOS collects at this process will be useful if the negotiations fail. And the applicants were to choose to go the traditional route, which is not the friendly route. So it will be, uh, substantive information, substantive, substantive data that the Board of Appeals can use if it needs to, to negotiate a smaller project. So the answer is yes, uh, definitely to have the applicant, whoever is your peer review consultants or does the original consulting, to have them do a series of options. Uh, the project that's applied for, the project that the BOS is considering. The project as applied for, the project that the BOS is considering. And perhaps a third in between. Yes, that's a very valuable piece of information that the applicants will pay for. And will be very useful to the town. Either way, if these negotiations continue, it'll be very valuable to you. If they don't continue, it'll be very valuable to the Board of Appeals.
Okay. So. I don't think then that we're, we're going to necessarily prioritize tonight. Any of the traffic related items. I think what we got out of this is that we think it would be. Good to find. Somebody who could look, you know, look at a more holistic overview of this and maybe this becomes one of the early negotiation points with the developer. For funding for that. Yeah, Becky, go ahead.
Um, with the traffic. And parking studies. As the one by the developer was, they did it. Not COVID time study. I'm presuming the one we would get from whomever does the next one would be the same thing, not relying on numbers that are. Potentially. Skewed from COVID.
Yeah. Well. So if we happen to have old numbers that are available to. That I can understand that, but I suspect that for a while, we're going to be looking at. In our, our. Current timeline, we're going to be looking at impacted numbers. Yes, I think it'd be ideal not to be relying purely on COVID, COVID time numbers like from this summer. I don't think they did. I thought they did the study from before that, but yes, we can ask for that.
Yeah.
Eli, in that regard, one consideration is that the high school is not in session with students right now. It's, it's all online and won't go on session. Until the end of the first semester sometime in January.
Yeah.
On the other hand, I think the school administration has a pretty good idea of how many kids used to drive.
Yeah, but you're not going to be able to put like traffic counters down and get a number, not. You're not going to be able to do a new study. This is not going to happen in the next several months. Not when it's going to be accurate the way Becky just asked for. But we're not going to solve that tonight, so let's, let's move on. Alright, so we talked about. High priority reduction of the number of units and that. Possibly reduce the size. We want to do. Look into doing a traffic study. Alright, let's talk about. Let's go back to Jeff's question about impact. Of the actual construction. And, and see which of these items pertain to that and. How we feel about the prioritization of conditions related to that. So. There were a few of these. I, I don't know if you say, I guess you'd say that retaining forest vegetation fits into the category of that. Constraints related to blasting. I know that. There were discussions between MECT and the developer regarding. The types of blasting that they would do. And the materials that they use for blasting, and there was some meeting of minds in that respect. Why don't we talk briefly about the, the question about the monitoring of structures against damage from blasting, especially since we have. John Whitten here. So there was a concern but raised by a resident and I don't have the letter right immediately handy. But they talked about when there was. Development done up in the area of the MAC, some of the blasting was helped for a pretty. Long distance away, I guess because of the way the. Geology works of the ledge in, in town. And so there was a concern expressed that. Because of that blasting could impact the physical structures long distance away from the. Development site. What? What's the history of this on 40Bs? What sort of conditions are, are reasonable or? To be placed on the developer and what sort of conditions do we not need to place because they, they naturally are going to be processed by the ZBA for this sort of issue?
So Mr. Chairman, I think it's, I think it's the latter. Certainly that's a reasonable condition of a Board of Appeals in any 40B or any project is. Post blast survey or pre blast survey, post blast survey. Performance bonds, security. The state fire code controls the, the town fire department has jurisdiction. And I'm not trying to, to, to minimize the, the concern. It's a real concern. So if the Board of Selectmen felt that an additional level of security were needed, it probably would be monetary. Or require. The, within a reasonable range of the project, there'd be insurance policies. And those homes are named as additional insured. That's a possibility. So I don't, I don't fully understand kind of the breadth of the concern in terms of distance. So I think that would need to be defined and then the Board of Selectmen could put it in as a condition. And the Board of Appeals could put it in as a more fine tuned condition. So I, I wouldn't, I would say in terms of pre and post blasting issues. To treat this project like any other project in town where that is a concern. The fact that it's a 40B really doesn't, doesn't make it less important. And the ZBA certainly could impose that as a condition of approval, as, as could you as part of your endorsement.
John Round, did the blasting item fall into your category of environmental?
You know, that bridges both. I mean, that's both environmental and, and, and structural. Take your pick. You know, I, it's, I, I think if, 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 if the. Blasting materials there can be changed around. I guess there was some discussion about, oh, we can have different types of materials and I, I, I don't know what's involved in blasting in terms of. The chemistry. Other than TNT, but. If, if that can be changed around, so it's not so much an environmental thing, then it becomes strictly structural, I guess.
Can we ask, how about if? Are we able to say, don't put the, the parking underground? That would reduce blasting.
That was a big factor for them in terms of mitigating stormwater. Storm, stormwater problems. You have all of that asphalt that is collecting oil.
Well, but what I mean is if the parking is still part of the building, but it's the first level of the building as opposed to it being subterranean.
Oh, in other words, don't go down as far.
Exactly.
That certainly affects the visual.
Yeah, I, I, I feel like. A, a lot of what people were saying is they really, really don't want to be able to see this. They don't want to be able to see it from the conservation land. They don't want to be able to see it from the road. I think going that direction might be the. The wrong way. Yeah, it might help on the one topic of blasting, but shoot, we can. The, the blasting is a, a short term thing that can constrain other ways. If the project moves forward, I was actually thinking of the parking being underneath the structure as a plus. I think it solves a whole lot of other issues that. Would really frustrate. Residents. Any other thoughts on the? It, it seems like. Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
I, I, I have a lot of concerns about the impact of blasting. On the ecology of this area. Not just what chemicals are used. That's certainly an important concern, but. This is a breeding ground. For. A lot of different animals and birds. That's right next to this and the impact on them is potentially significant. Such that we would lose those. Those species in our area. If the, if the breeding is disrupted because of the construction. So I, my, when I looked at blasting, I looked at it primarily as environmental. The idea that, you know. Buildings. Quarter of a mile away are going to be impacted. That may, that may very well be, and I certainly want to see that taken into consideration, but my primary concern is the environmental impact on the ecology.
I agree.
And I don't know, and I don't know how we study that. I mean, this is not a project that necessarily is going to, John, maybe you can clarify. Whether an EIR is required for something like this, given its location to conservation land and, and, and very important habitat.
So the triggers of a project this size typically are not an EIR. It will trigger an ENF, an environmental notification form. But it doesn't meet any of the mandatory triggers that I'm aware of based on the information they've submitted. It doesn't meet the ER, EIR triggers, which is the more robust analysis of impact. There is a fail safe process under MIPA where petitioners can try and push the secretary to require an EIR. But truth be told, in 40B world, the secretary rarely pushes the EIR requirement. So generally speaking, I think the, the board should presume you're not going to see an EIR.
But in 40B world, you would. I don't know whether you would agree with me or not. Most of these projects are done. In the center of urban areas, not right next to a major conservation area.
Oh, I totally agree. No, 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 I, I wasn't, I, I was saying that with a bit of disdain that. That the Commonwealth still treats 40Bs as if they get a pass on environmental review at the state level. So no, you're absolutely right. And, and truth, again, the problem here will be. Can you rely on the Commonwealth to do the due diligence that the, the town needs to do on its own? And the answer is no. Be, because of the triggers that this project will. Trigger will not be. From what has been submitted will not trigger an EIR. There isn't sufficient number of units, parking spaces. Or wastewater flow. Or. Those would be the big ones, wastewater flow, and they don't exceed any of the mandatory triggers for an EIR.
And blasting wouldn't contribute to that.
No, blasting's not a trigger in and of itself. It, it, it has consequences that the board's discussing that you can try and mitigate, but that does not create a trigger under MIPA.
So then. So then if we, if we want to cover our bases and have that. Address, then we would need to establish it as a condition.
You, you, the BO, the BOS would make that a condition of your endorsement and the ZBA would make it a condition of any grant of a comprehensive permit, yes.
Make what?
So the, the what could be, the what could be the requirement for the pre blasting survey now. Or and for what could be the requirement to post performance bonds and security. For project of. Parcels or projects within a defined radius. And it could be the posting of or the creation of insurance certificates for those particular projects within that radius. I think though you, the board would be better off starting with the former, which is. A pre blast survey to identify vulnerable properties. So then the board would know the universe of things that need to be protected, properties that need to be protected.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Whitten, um, how do you determine the radius of the impact? Because we believe we, we have some evidence. That this is a particularly geologically sensitive. Extensively geologically sensitive area.
I'm entering kind of a field that is above my pay grade in terms of the geologic impacts of, of blasting. I mean, I know a little bit about it. In a prior life, but I think that's where you would need an engineer, hydrogeologist, hydrologist to be able to articulate. What is the radius of blasting that will show or could show impacts from the blasting? There are folks that do just that. And especially in, in bedrock terrain like, like the North Shore.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go Becky. I was discussing, so we. We should, we should put on a geologist on the list of people we would like to consult. Done.
Go ahead, Becky.
So sort of to this end of the. Our concerns with blasting and environmental impacts. Is there any sense in or reason that we might say to the developer? Is there any parcel that you are aware of within town that you might be willing to swap for? Or am I beating a dead horse? And I love horses.
So better beat a dead one than a live one.
Exactly. But I mean, I mean, is that something we could propose to the developer?
Well, the question is, what parcel would that be?
Well, I, that's, I, I know, and there, I, it's, it's, it's opening up an entire different can of worms and financial. Potential problems. However, if there's this much of a concern with this location. Is there somewhere else they might? Potentially take their project. And if no, we should figure this out and just. Make sure everybody understands that stands that that is not an option, if that's the case.
So. So I don't know entirely how to. Address your. So, so my concerns about. Looking at a land swap involve. Are that the developer simply wouldn't consider it at all. Now that's my speculation, but it, it's worth. I, I suppose it's worth discussing. I don't want to spend too terribly much time on it right now. Because unless, uh, we can ask Sue Brown, John Whitten. The. How often that sort of thing has happened and with what success? I think you addressed that at some point.
Yeah, he did say.
He did. The, some of the parcels that we might do land swaps with though, present the developer, will present the developer with. Challenges that they have very carefully avoided here. So they, they've chosen carefully on this site. They chose this site in part because they knew it had very few abutters that they might potentially have to deal with. It's pretty accessible for. In terms of traffic to 128 limits the amount of traffic impact that we might otherwise complain about. It's an environmentally sensitive area. That's the main. Item in MECT. They've been in negotiations with MECT about this already. We know that part. So I, I suspect that the developer would really be uninterested in a land swap, but. That, that, that's my supposition right now. And some of the land swaps that we might consider would bring considerable expense to the town. Like so, for example, if we were to talk about the DPW site. Well, if we talked about a land swap with them for the DPW site, then we'd be talking about the expense of. Moving the DPW someplace else and the impact to our infrastructure. It'd be a little bit of a case of the grass is greener on the other side of the fence. If, if this were proposed at that site, there'd just be a whole completely different set of concerns. And I don't know how much it benefits us from going into that sort of consideration. And then. Dredging up those concerns and I don't. Dredging up those concerns. And I don't know i if it's a very useful conversation for us to have, but. Are other board members interested in pursuing that line of inquiry? Into whether or not. There are other areas that we might ask the developer for a land swap. At this point in time.
Having been involved in looking for a place for a new high school many years ago. There aren't a lot of places that come to mind as being suit town owned and suitable. For a development like this.
Yeah, town out on this pretty critical area.
Town owned and not under conservation.
Yeah. So. Let's. Let's not try to pursue that one right now. We can continue to talk about it, but I'd rather try to try to. Try try to talk about the thing that we have right in front of us right now and address it from that stand, this this that standpoint. What what would we want to do to mitigate the issues here? I know that M E C T has sent us a list of. Concerns that bridge both the impact of construction and the impact. To the environment, the construction. And we have at the board level some pretty serious concerns about the impacts of construction. So. Maybe the way. Forward as far as tonight is concerned is to gather is is take us a little item here. The the gathering together of the different possible conditions that. Greg has listed. And. Categorize the ones that have an impact on impacts to impacts related to construction on into the environment. Maybe composite them with some of the concerns and suggestions from the M E C T group. And develop a little potential list of conditions covering that set of items. Is that? Something that you folks would get behind, I think is a reasonable priority.
Yes.
Yep.
Woo hoo, progress. Okay.
There's one, there's one issue in that bucket. That. That falls into two major buckets that we started with. Impact on the environment is one. Impact on town infrastructure is another. And the one issue that that straddles those is impacts on water supply. Both in terms of the construction itself and. And the ongoing operation of this facility. The impacts on the water supply as well as the impacts on the water supply in terms of. The need for this facility to take down water for our water supply. And I know that there's been a lot of concerns raised in the correspondence with the board. About, well, what is the impact on the water supply? So I I think that as we're talking about this, we need to consider issues that straddle the buckets.
Okay. It's a good point about the the impacts of water supply, and there was a suggestion made. In one of Greg's comments, I think, related to, for example, irrigation. So. Water supply in town. There's there's two basic categories of usages by residentially speaking. One is the average, you know, water use for in-house consumption, cooking, bathing, et cetera, and the other is irrigation. And for the the medium, so so all of those units together, the amount of water that they use. Is kind of a drop in the bucket as far as impact to our water supply is concerned. If you look at the the use, the water usage profile in town. About eleven percent, ten percent of the people use about fifty percent of the water. And it's a completely nonlinear distribution of water usage, and a vast, vast majority of it comes from irrigation. In the summer months, with the peak usage being a property that uses. On average, I think during the very heaviest usage, twelve thousand gallons a day in irrigation. This development, all of the units in it, in terms of the actual. Residents in won't come even close, not even close to the the irrigation usage that happens in a lot of the residences in town. However. It does raise a question about the irrigation. Of landscaping at this property and how much that would actually use. And there was a a question raised about whether or not. We should ask them to use like non potable water and whether or not it was an option for them to do that. And and to make an estimate of how much irrigation was actually. Going to be used. It's really easy to calculate how pretty precisely how much water they're likely to use from the the residences themselves. Hard to calculate how much they'll use for irrigation. We could make some projections. But. It's it's probably worth looking into. I'm not sure exactly how we chase down the irrigation number, but I I could I could think of some ways to do it. Sue and John, is this a a standard part of the analysis for projecting irrigation usage in developments?
I wouldn't, I've not been on a peer review where they've projected irrigation uses, but I know that. I have been on projects where a condition was to not irrigate.
Yeah, I I agree with Sue, Mister Chair. In many cases, the condition of approval is no irrigation. And to require landscaping that doesn't require irrigation to to ensure that. I mean, a landowner has the right to install their own private well in Massachusetts, so if they can irrigate through that mechanism, then that would be acceptable, but. To use municipal water for irrigation can be a prohibited activity, prohibited use, yes.
And I would just say the exception might be during installation of materials, because you don't want it to be installed and not. Being taken care of. So once established, I would say the irrigation, you could prohibit irrigation.
Right, yeah. Like when you plant a tree, you really need to water it for a few years, so it doesn't just die.
Like, could we possibly even include under the water slash environmental, as if we're talking about. Requiring them not to use municipal water for sustained irrigations. You know, if they don't use grass right there, you've already. You know, reduced a lot of water use, and there are lots of indigenous or local plants. Such as a native cranberry, which is a wonderful ground cover and doesn't require landscape irrigation. So could we do that?
Yeah. So, yeah, certainly. Is it, I don't want to get too far into the weeds of the details, but.
Right.
It sounds like there's a a pretty easy avenue for us and probably. A very easy to negotiate avenue, because I don't think it's gonna be any skin off the developers. Knows. If we tell them to spend, you know, less money.
Thank you.
Cause we would charge them through the nose for the irrigation water, I'll tell you that.
Before we leave irrigation for one quick question, is are there any restrictions on who can put a well directly into. The sources of the town's water?
So as a as a general rule in Massachusetts, a landowner has the right to install their own private well. And those wells typically have very low draw, very low volume, so those would be irrigation wells. However, if you're concerned about kind of institutional type irrigation, that's where the Board of Selectmen and and or the Board of Appeals could put in a. Proclusion of irrigation wells as part of the project. And that all landscaping would have to be zero escaping, requiring very little water, and that could, that would be a permissible condition. Both again, from the Board of Selectmen and or the Board of Appeals.
In your experience, how's that gone over with developers?
Oh, I I think as a general rule, they're fine with it. It, you know, as long as the landscaping can be maintained in a low water environment. You know, drought resistant plants. No, no, I I don't see that as a substantive issue that most developers are going to push back on.
Okay. Jeff, did we cover your topic there? Jeff, you're still muted.
I I have we finished environmental? We haven't covered wastewater, but that's a that's a very challenging thing to cover. And size matters.
So wastewater. So. John Whitten, I'm gonna borrow you again here. Wastewater is one of those things which I believe is. Very much covered by the D E P, right?
So they're putting in a package treatment plant that gets triggered because of the flow, so Title V does not apply here. It's a groundwater discharge permit that's required. So, yes, Mister Chairman, the D E P does control the permitting process. However, the town has a role in ensuring other impacts from the wastewater treatment process are are being protected. So down gradient wetlands, down gradient water supply. The D E P standards are the floor, not the ceiling, so the town could impose greater restrictions. On nitrogen loading and phosphorus loading from the treatment plant. So all of that is fair game. The the only caveat there is for that really requires the board to have support from an expert who can testify. Or at least provide the board with support that, yes, in fact, down gradient receptors will be impacted by phosphorus loading that won't be limited. To the extent you want it limited by D E P. So D E P is looking at it from a really kind of a formulaic approach. And the town's gonna look at it from a very site specific approach. So it is handled by D E P, but the town still has a role in requiring any additional. Bells and whistles or protections that the town might want on the discharge, both in terms of impact and of course, in terms of quantity.
Okay, and the and the weeds there are handled by the Z B A.
Y- yes, because the Z B A will will then know what the number of units are. The Z B A will have. Plans as to leach fields, the site specific soil conditions. So, yes, that that may be a condition best deferred to the Z B A. But if the Board of Selectmen wanted to impose conditions now. Then you could consider that on nitrogen levels and phosphorus levels, just as examples. Because that ties back to the early work in Manchester in the eighties on the groundwater protection district. Where we looked at issues of nitrogen and phosphorus loading north of one twenty eight. So I I think it is relevant for the Board of Selectmen to consider it. But clearly appropriate for the Board of Appeals to impose conditions there as well.
Okay, but in terms of the process, so. Some of the things that you talked about are things that would need to be established in. The conditions in the the letter of endorsement. Which then implies that in order to do that effectively, we would need to. Get a certain amount of the research done in front of that. Is that correct?
That's that's correct, and that's the delicate balance here. That's right.
Okay.
Eli, can I just jump in on that particular comment?
Yes.
And that's that's John. So. Would it be possible to have this selecting at this stage? Suggest a condition that says there's no net increase. Of nutrient loading beyond the property and then let the details of how that is accomplished. Walk through the Z B A process.
Yes, it's an excellent suggestion, Greg, and kind of no increase at the down gradient property boundary would be the language we'd use. Yes, that's exactly right.
Do we need someone to do a study of of? The current nitrogen and phosphorus levels then?
Well, you're, it's really the receptors that you're concerned about, and until they file for their groundwater discharge permit. That level of detail won't have been completed. It's a very expensive study. It's a very time consumed study. And D E P will require it because it determines the direction of flow from the wastewater treatment plant. So until they know that, it's gonna be hard for the B O S to condition it. So it's a really important question. I I think Greg's suggestion is is we're at that level. Now where the board could impose that condition and be comforted that when the details come out. You've said no net increase in nitrogen or phosphorus at the down gradient property boundary. That's a that's a very protective condition right there.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Because we don't actually have to do any work upfront.
Right. So so, John, that that means that really we don't need necessarily a consultant because the D E P is dictating so much of that. If we give them some spec specifications. We're probably covered.
Yes, I I I think part of it's gonna be. They will not apply for the groundwater discharge permit until well after they receive B O S approval. So it's a chicken or egg problem. So you won't have that level of detail from them anytime soon. So that's kind of why Greg's suggestion or that kind of very macro suggestion really works in an in an issue like this. They're they're not gonna spend the hundreds of thousands of dollars to do the groundwater discharge study report now. So as long as there is some no net increase, no increase beyond a certain threshold. No impact greater than X. As long as that's articulated by the B O S now, then you've protected yourself against their study that comes out later.
All right, that's helpful. Okay. Are there other comments on environment? I have a direction that I want to go here with the. The remainder of the meeting, and I'll I'll go through it in a minute, except for I want to ask if there's more questions about environment right now.
Okay, good. Separate from environmental impact, future environmental impact. There's been discussion, and I think you had it in the list that you went over. Of. A conservation restriction on the remainder of the property. From further development. And we raised this with. With the developer in the meeting that we had with them on twenty nine October and. And they they said, you know, that they they had no plans for that. And I think that we need to put a condition in that goes beyond, there's no plans to say that's a restriction.
Yeah, no plans for the land and but they also indicated that they'd be open to. Conservation restriction. I think they maybe indicated that to M E C T as well. And I agree, I think that's a. Probably a pretty high priority item for us to ask for and and a safe one, too, because honestly, the developer is gonna get their money out of this development. It's no skin off their back to give us the the conservation easement. It's not gonna cost them any money, and in fact, probably save them a little bit of money in taxes. And. And it would certainly make. M E C T and other folks feel better. So I I'd be pretty strongly in favor of that one, and I do think it's a pretty high priority. Other board members?
I think so. I I got what you said, Eli, the impression that they would, you know, be amenable to that.
I agree. I don't think that one's gonna take an awful lot of additional argument. I don't think that one's gonna take an awful lot of, um, additional argument.
I do have one other thing before we move off of environment. And without going too deep into it, um, because it's not set in stone or anything. But I did notice that a number of the plantings that they were talking about using are not necessarily native plantings and some of them, um, I do know to be fairly aggressive in spreading, and I'm not, I think that whatever they use should be in keeping with the properties, the, the, um, the properties we have that are, um, conservation properties so that we don't introduce, um, plants that could push out the native plants, that we require them to use more plantings.
No invasive species. Is that what you're basically saying?
Well, yes. And not just no invasive, but also plants that are along the lines of what we already have in that area, so we don't create competition for the plants that, that are naturally there. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Is that, are we able to put that as a condition? Is that something any other?
Whatever we want in there as a condition. As John Witten said, this is not, uh, we can't ask for the sky, but, uh, conditions like that are relatively cheap for them to handle, I think. And if we wanna put it in there, we certainly can.
Good, should, perhaps you should, uh, consult with, uh, Tom Henderson. You know, I, I understand it's kind of a courtesy consult, but, um, maybe it could be a little bit more than that.
Sue, Sue Brown, um, we, um, we're currently involved with the, the Western Woods and the Forest Stewardship Plan. Uh, we have consultants working on that right now, and he actually just finished up Essex. Does that person possibly have pretty much all of the information that we would want already?
Of, of course, for certain, he's, and he's done the, um, um, has done a, you know, a step by step or a grid, um, assessment of all the lands in, up in that area. So he would know exactly what is growing there at this time and what he would recommend adding to the mix in, in the case that it's not a healthy mix now. So I think he would be a good cons- consult for that. And, and I think it is a pretty easy ask for indigenous species.
Okay. So a little bit of work to develop language around that, but, uh, pretty doable.
One, one small comment, Eli, um, your mention of, um, a tax reduction, um, if there is a conservation easement, needs to go into our understanding of what the tax revenue flow is from the property.
I don't know about that. I think, um, that, that part might actually be not in our control. Well, w- well, actually, let me put it this way. Oh, you mean, oh, you mean, in, if we think we wanna grant them a kind of conservation easement, we need to calculate the fiscal impact of that? Is that what you meant?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, just, just a, a word on that, if I, if I could, that the, the conservation restriction would be offered by the landowner. And it would then go through the, the channels of how it gets approved by the Secretary of Environmental Affairs. If it's a requirement of any municipal board, it will not be a deductible exercise, because it, it'll be a permit condition or a, a condition of a contractual approval. So they benefit from the conservation restriction in that it'll reduce perhaps their property tax to some extent. Uh, but there won't be a federal or state tax, income tax deduction for a requirement of a imposition of a conservation restriction. So i- in terms of their kind of financial incentive to do it, other than the, the property tax reduction, they won't have one. But the real issue is what I think the Board of Selectmen is talking about is the, the permanence of no further development on this particular site. So the board can accomplish that through a permit condition, but that can always be modified. The conservation restriction makes it permanent.
Right. And this town likes conservation restrictions.
That's right.
This town also wants a positive cash flow out of this property.
That's right, yep.
Yeah. Fair point.
Eli, do we have, um, handy the, um, the environmental suggestions from M E C T? I do see that in the chat, we've got, um,
I believe that I sent those out, um, but they came in the most recent one came into us fairly late today, I thought that I sent them.
Okay, I know I got a number of ones, but I don't remember, but the, I, I think those are all very reasonable um, ones to put into conditions as well, that, that we could do as opposed to what Z B A might do. And for the people who can't see what those are, they are light and noise concerns, I quote, such as light and noise pollution, visual impact, the need for green site caretaking. In other words, no pesticides, herbicides. Anyway, there you go. I think those we should incorporate as well.
Well, we should probably debate them a little bit, um, and probably evaluate them for, um,
You don't, you don't wanna just go with me saying that? I'm just kidding.
A, a bunch of them seem like they've already been discussed and covered, but so for example, uh, one of them is, um, elimination of road salt for ice melting.
Yep.
Uh, out of hand, I would rather have, um, a little bit more evaluation of that before, uh, I as a representative of the town put that into a condition. Um, but I certainly think it's, it is, uh, w- when I talked about taking the list of things from, uh, Greg's list and the list of M E C T's list and putting it into an environmental bucket.
Yep, okay.
It was my intent that those be included and also to be debated at a later meeting. So, so, so my objective right now is to, to try to organize, um, and prioritize the things that we're interested in and then figure out how, um, how we're going to attack them and, and going forward in terms of, of coming to a final set of conditions that we might bring before the developer. Because right now, and we're working towards a point where we want to have a meeting with the developer where we say, hey, we have an initial set of conditions. This is, this is what they are. And, um, so that process is gonna take us a bit of time here. Um, and the initial list that Greg came up with is great, but we have no way to organize it in terms of, um, in terms of the priorities and, and, uh, under the guidance of the board without going through a few of these messy conversations to start with. And the next successive conversations will be less messy, right? As we, um, agree on how we're gonna organize and, and attack these. Okay, so are we good on environment right now? Knowing that we're gonna come back to it in spades at subsequent meetings?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so, um, uh, let's, uh, pause and talk logistics briefly. So eight thirty. Uh, I'm not tired. You know, Arlie Guthrie and Gala Guthrie's, you know, uh, wines. But I, I do want to, uh, leave enough time for some comments and handle some of the comments from the residents. And, um, uh, be sure that we organize the rest of our attack here through the, uh, the list of, uh, things that Greg has brought up. And I, and I'm, I'm not under any illusion that we're gonna cover all of it, uh, tonight and get it all nicely neatly buckled up into packets that we're gonna, we know exactly how we're gonna handle, but I wanna handle some of the major ones. If I go through this list, I don't, I don't think I wanna take on, um, uh, high energy efficiency or any detailed discussion around that tonight. I wanna put that off to another, another meeting. What I would like to talk about are, um, some of the, um, infrastructure, uh, uh, related items and, and one time contributions. So those would include things like water main extension. Contributions towards purchase of a ladder truck, which I know we always already kind of talked about a little bit, but contribution to C P C land conservation. Contribution towards Sweeney Park, um, turf field. Um, I think those ones I would like to cover tonight. And then the other items, like the, the administrative ones, such as agreeing not to appeal to agreed to concessions, payment, professional fees. Not, let's, let's not talk about those tonight. Um, they're, they're very good for us to have in the record, but they're not really um, substantial structural, um, items in our discussion. So I, I'd like to talk about those items that I just raised, the water main extension and those one time contributions. And then, um, opened up to some public comment at that point. Is that, is that an approach that's, that the board's okay with? Okay, all right, so, um, let's talk about the contributions first. So, uh, in any particular order, because they're, um, one time contributions, and I'm not gonna con- talk about amounts. Just let's talk about the, the concept of whether or not these particular areas are, and then in general, the idea of one time contributions is something that's a priority for us. And if the areas that are listed here are, are, um, representative of what we're really interested in. Right now, we have ladder truck, C P C Land Conservation Fund and Sweeney Park Turf.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
I would much rather see us focus on those elements that are going to affect the project that are going to affect the town over the next several decades, rather than a one, any of the one time contributions.
Well, that's a nice concrete statement. Thank you. Actually, it's useful. Other board members?
I, am I on? Yes, I kind of, I, I do see, agree with Ann, um, from the perspective that those are definitely things we can come back to later.
How do you mean?
Well, if, if, I'm sorry, go ahead. Who was?
No, I'd like you to answer.
Okay, and I, I think that, that we know and they know that we are going to be asking them for donations. But should we speak more? I, I, I kind of think talking more about water lines, will gas lines be put up there? The professional fees, having them, you know, upfront, will they be paying for, you know, ju- not will they? Asking them to be paying for such as what, um, Greg put under number seventeen, and for the people who are not looking at the, this list, it is seventeen is the payment of all professional fees and expenses for engineers, architects, land safe architects, et cetera, et cetera. But, um,
Yeah, I was hoping to punt on that item for now, because I feel like we're, we're wrestling with these structural uh, structural organization of these things, and I wanna try to keep us a little bit away from the details if possible for the time being.
And staying away from, uh, looking at number three, the high energy efficiency, those kinds of.
I, 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 I do, because r- right now, I'm, I'm trying to feel my, uh, feel our way through this, this process. And we've got, coming out of this, some fairly, um, broad groups of things that we need to reorganize. And I think, and for the, in terms of trying to keep this meeting relatively efficient, we're gonna have more meetings, right?
Yes.
Addressing the, the lead certification, uh, coming back to that, we can do that at a, a later meeting. I'm not sure. Um, that, it's a huge, big ticket item, and a lot of the other things that we've been talking are fairly structural and, and major in their focus. So I'm trying to keep us focused there.
Okay, then to the, 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 the one time contributions, are there other items we could look at for contributions? For example, I do know that we need to address fields and that there is a field study that's been done. But I don't know that Sweeney Park has been completely studied at this point. Um, and I'm not necessarily comfortable with asking them for money for that at this point. I definitely think we need to get, um, our fire department where it can handle a building this size with proper people and equipment.
So on the, um, uh, Sweeney Park project, just from an informational standpoint, um, there was a C P C, um, uh, allocation of, I think it was twenty five thousand dollars, and then a matching from the town for twenty five thousand dollars in last year's budget. And then COVID came along and we stripped that out for a total of fifty thousand dollars. I think that was around engineering, um, for Sweeney Park to
Two hundred thousand.
Do the, uh, get us the next steps on the turf field project, which is, uh, all told, over a million, two million in that ballpark. Is that right, Greg? Roughly guessing. Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're, you know, all said and done, it's with engineering, you're gonna be close to two million.
Yeah, so, um, the engineering's not done on that, um, you're right, and, um, so that, that's just from an informational standpoint. We did put it off, um, in last year's budget cycle when we were reducing our budget in response to COVID in March. Uh, okay, uh, Jeff and John, comments and contributions?
Oh, I don't know, a- and to come full circle, with, is there some topic specifically that relates, you know, to the project that you wanted to, you wanted to address when you made your comment? Or is that just kind of a general?
Sorry, having trouble on, having trouble unmuting. I'm, I'm here, uh, at least in body. Okay, I would like, much rather see us, um, insist that, that they be environmentally sensitive, um, that they take on the charges that are specific to their project, like the, um, extending of the water, uh, to them. Um, and, uh, the road projects that we've talked about, um, making it accessible for pedestrians and, and bicycles, um. And I would much rather see it at a hundred and twenty than a hundred and fifty seven. And, um, all of those, I think, are, are things that will benefit the town in the long run of more than, uh, one time cash contributions.
So, um, so, so yes, this entire exercise is about prioritization in the context of, um, trying to build a laundry list that doesn't make the developer walk away. John Witten, um, maybe it's time to, uh, ask this question. This is, this is a little bit of art of negotiations, which you've been through with a lot of forty Bs. And, uh, I, I guess I could compare it to, uh, purchasing a house when somebody lowballs you and you go back and forth and people get their feelings hurt. Uh, how does that process typically pay out, play out with a developer? And when we produce a, a list of things and they say, no way, no how, we're only gonna give you twenty dollars instead of a hundred dollars. And then we negotiate back and forth. How do we manage the process of and make a judgment as to whether or not the list that we're producing uh, is going to be one that they're just gonna walk away from upfront?
You, you really don't know, Mr. Chairman, and you know, part of it is to, to know the You, you really don't know, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, part of it is to, to know the applicant, to know the project, to know whether they have fee ownership or have it under agreement, to look at who their team is. I mean, it, it really is like buying a house or buying a car or buying a business. And everyone puts their cards on the table, more or less, the, the board has to because you're a public body. So I, I think exactly what the board is doing tonight is the right thing. Create the list that is meaningful to you, to the town, and then provide that to the applicant, and then get a response. And it is a process of negotiation. I, I don't, I don't think, certainly in, and I think I'm speaking for Greg and Sue, just, you know, in listening to the board's discussion tonight, nothing you have proposed, adjusted, or talked about is beyond the realm of possibility. You know, no one has talked about a new library or a new fire station or some serious expenditures of capital costs. These are project offsets that you've discussed, and those are traditionally what the Board of Appeals would require. So I, I haven't heard you ask for anything that's beyond the pale. Of, of course, the devil's in the details. It's up to the applicant. So I, I think the way you're progressing is exactly the right way, is to fine tune the list as much as possible, and then have an open dialogue with the applicant. If they push back, then the Board of Selectmen can have that conversation. But I, I don't, I don't think you're going in the wrong direction. The question a lot of boards ask themselves, like any home buyer, is did I pay too much? Did I over, did I overpay? And that kind, that kind of remorse, of course, affects cities and towns. So did you ask for enough is the question in this context. And so that would be a way of framing the conversation. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just one other point, there's really two parts to this. And the board has talked about this, there's project-related impacts. So there's the nexus between the project and the impact. And then there's townwide impacts that are more subjective, more difficult to analyze. And those are the ones that often get left out. The former is the job of the Board of Appeals, because they're going to have the data to do that kind of granular analysis. It's also part of your job too, but, but even perhaps a bit less. I see your opportunity to look at that second category, things that the Board of Appeals could never ask for, because if they did, that would trigger an automatic appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. So in a way, the Board of Selectmen really are being asked to look at the bigger picture items, things that the ZBA won't be doing on a regular basis. And, and that, again, becomes part of, here are the things we want for the town of Manchester as a whole. So that would be local preference. That would be impacts to the public schools, public safety, bigger picture items, that if the ZBA starts to push for, especially if it's a non-LIP, the ZBA is going to run into a lot of roadblocks if this gets appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee. So I, I think the way you're doing it, Mr. Chairman, is exactly right. And I think just fine tune that list and then have the sit down with the applicant.
All right. So I'm going to have comments about the ladder truck and fire in a minute myself, but other comments from other board members on the contributions?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. So on issue of the fire department ladder truck, that sort of thing. The, one of the issues that the fire chief had raised was the potential impact to staffing. And we haven't really talked about that very much tonight. I think I, I think it's important to talk about it. I think it's perhaps, it is something that should be discussed in the context of a, a building, which is in multiple different configurations, three stories versus four. And I think it bears some, some more discussion and analysis over what the actual impact to the fire department is. We have some comments made by the, the chief, but we haven't gone through fiscal analysis within com. I think that entire piece of impact to the fire department bears some much more detailed analysis that we're going to have to do before we can have any real substantive conversation about that. Probably one of the things that we need to discuss on Monday about how we're going to pursue that. I imagine it's a relatively high priority topic to cover. I just don't know exactly how we're going to cover it yet. Do other board members agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah, we need some comment from the chief.
Yes. And the fight income.
Yeah.
Yeah. Same goes for the school though, too. I think we need a lot more info there, potential impact.
Yeah. All right. So let's, let's put the handling of that off to Monday, how we're going to attack that. We agree we're going to so no particular decisions about contributions. Let's put it this way. Ann Harrison essentially proposed that the contributions, the topic of one-time contributions represent a lower priority item than environmental concerns and other long-term
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure impacts. Is that something that board members agree with? Because if you do agree with it, then we could focus on those other items, getting them sort of under control from a standpoint of how we're going to attack them and defer a little bit for now, the, the issue of contributions, come back to that later because it'll be lower priority. So can we agree to that?
Eli, I certainly would agree with number 12 and 13, the, the land conservation, Sweeney Park, they aren't so tied to the project. The latter may or the ladder truck may or may not be, depending upon the chief's comments and what the final layout is for the, for the project. So that, that stays on the list.
Yeah, I agree. Jeff and Ann?
What, what is the item 14, contribution to the sewer project?
14 is a difference, provide proof of annual inspections.
Okay, that's not the one I have. There, there was, there was an item that was, when you were going through the list, about a contribution to the sewer project for the town.
If I said that
I don't think so.
disconnected from my brain.
Okay, okay.
I don't remember that one.
I don't know that these are less of a priority to me in the sense that the highest priority at this point for me would be identifying which consultants we need and what are the questions we're asking them. Because when you talk very generally about the impact on the schools or the impact on other town services. If, if we have a project that is coming in, either at 120 or 157 units, and we have a better understanding, not from the developers' numbers, but from perhaps a consultant that we could get, who could identify what the potential youth impact is, then something like Sweeney becomes much more important. If you've got 35 or 40 students coming into town, who may need to participate in athletics on those, on that field, that becomes much more important and a much more direct impact of the project. So I, I, I don't necessarily agree that those are low priority from my point of view. What's a higher priority is really identifying the consultants that we need to get at that information.
I agree.
Yes, I do too. And again, I do have concerns with asking for a large, or a, let me refer, a one-time contribution to Queen Sweeney, when there's still some concerns as to, you know, the issues with the use of Sweeney, especially in terms of flooding and that, that still is being studied.
Okay, Jeff, I take your point.
I think we've identified some consult consultations that we need. But I don't think we really have nailed down who are, who are the consultants and what are the questions that we need to ask them? All right. I'm not talking about who specifically, but generically.
Don't we have at this point, traffic study and a pre-blast survey? Are those, do we have anything else that we're?
Well, we also talked about the, the, when we talked about the traffic study, we talked about the, the notion of doing a more holistic.
Right, right.
I don't think that tonight we're going to be able to identify all of the experts as part of this, like a little working discussion that we're actually going to need. What I would suggest is that we do another pass with Sue Brown. Given that, that is an expressed priority or a wish from the board selectmen to identify the, the categories of experts and, and that we could pull in and should pull in and bring that forward in, in the next working group meeting. You okay with taking it on that way?
Yes. Is that kind of, is that Monday?
Yes, you have to have that information by Monday, sir. Preferably Friday so we can review it.
So, no, it's not.
Then yes.
So I, I, coming out of this, I think, by the way, board members, that we're going to probably end up with more frequent working group meetings over the next several weeks. Seems pretty clear to me that where it's going to take a few iterations to grind through this structure. We can schedule those up, we're starting scheduling those up on Monday. Just wanted to give you a heads up, but that's my, that's my assessment of it so far. All right. So let's let's put contributions to bed for now. And let's talk about the water main extension, which is probably the equivalent of the new library. So the water main extension along Long School Creek, that is a school street across 128 to the site. This is the overall topic of bringing, bringing water to the developer, development. Actually fits into multiple aspects of what we've been considering, the long-term issue of getting utilities underneath 128. As far as limited commercial district is concerned. But my understanding of it also is that there's potentially further impact because the water main that runs up to, up School Street to that point isn't all that great right now.
Eli, is that to say all of the, all of the facilities north of School Street are on wells?
No. No, there's, I'm not
North of 128, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, they, they are. There, there's no water, town water out there that I know.
So MAC and Family Medicine, they're all, they're all wells.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, correction, there, there is a small water line that serves the MAC. It's under 128.
All right.
That, that, that however, is not sufficient to extend down that water to serve this new development. So ideally you would have a loop system. So you would want to go across 128 over the overpass, up School Street. And you would eventually want to improve the line through the MAC if they develop further and improve that line that's currently under 120, under 128. Down, down Mills, comes down and ties back into Mill Street area. So in terms of the School Street line, it, it is undersized now. It needs to be replaced to serve adequately all of, all of school up, up to this, you know, town side, village side of 128. That's, that's in the capital plan currently. Chuck will be asking for monies for that project over the next two years.
So the question is how the developer wants water to be brought out to that site currently? And how much do we press on them to fund that process?
I think it's a reasonable ask. I don't know what this costs.
What, what would they do if we didn't?
Because they, they need our water.
If, if, if it comes up in front of town meeting to extend that water line, that is a town meeting vote essentially on the project and on 40R.
Yeah, if, if it weren't for the 40B, we'd be discussing it in the context of 40R.
Do we have an idea of how much the the updating the School Street water main is, Greg?
I believe it's in the three quarter, three quarter of a million dollar range.
So that's somewhere that we could potentially ask them for a one-time donation towards that, right? In addition to running the water main?
Well, I mean, frankly, we need to do that regardless of this project. So I think you, I, I would suggest you focus on them paying for the, the extension, but we don't currently have any water.
Why don't we ask for both and then we can negotiate?
Right, exactly. Because I mean, if, if, if we weren't if it weren't for them, the development going in, we wouldn't be under so, we wouldn't be having to do it so soon. Or is that not the case?
Yeah, I couldn't say that truthfully. So we've, we've had the School Street replacement in, in the works for a few years.
As we're trying to do with all our main water lines.
Right. It was, it's part of the general upgrade of the water system to provide adequate flow throughout town.
Right. Okay, thank you.
But there isn't any reason we can't ask them to contribute to.
Doesn't hurt that.
And if we, you know, we don't need to get 100%, but some, some part of it, they're willing to support, that would be great. Because they're, they're at the mercy.
They, they can build the extension all they want, and they're not going to get water unless the street is fixed.
John Whitten? Yes, comments, thoughts?
Yes, comments, thoughts? Well, when an applicant needs municipal services, the applicant has to pay for those services if the water or sewer line is not within. Within the frontage of their property, which it's not. So the applicant has to pay to access public water and public sewer. In this case, it's not public sewer, but it's public water. So they would have to pay for the infrastructure improvements regardless. So it it is not a reach at all for the BOS to require the full payment for this project, even if and. And I appreciate what Greg was saying, even if this has been shown on your capital improvement plan for the past next number of years. The applicant is the one who is the tipping point. But for the but but for the applicant, you wouldn't need to extend the line right now. Could the town cost share with the applicants or could other developers cost share? Of course. But that would be something for the applicant to research. And it could be of assistance, but it's not at all unreasonable. Even if this were just before the Board of Appeals to require the applicant to pay the full cost of the water line.
Alright. Well, that makes it kind of easy. It's obviously going to be a fairly high priority. Because I think it's true that if we went to town meeting and said, oh, by the way. We need to put money in so the developer could build a 40B. They would probably be unhappy about that. Put it very mildly. Alright. Do we need to spend more time right now on the water water main? We got enough information. Jeff, you made it. Yep.
Back coming back, you're in. How do we put a number on this, Greg?
Yeah, I can I can get Chuck to come up with a quick estimate. It's it's, you know, it's you can put together a linear foot. Footage cost estimate, this is higher cost through like. Due to the crossing of 128 because you're up in the air.
But the the issue here is is that what's required for the 40B. We want to exceed in terms of capacity to cover any further development in 40R.
If that happens.
Well, so you the pipe that you would put into would not, I mean, the cost differential is not that high. You're digging the trench, you're putting in pipe, you know, putting in a six inch pipe versus an eight inch pipe, which is what we would be talking about. Minimal cost differential there.
Why do we need to know how much it costs? We're just saying. Every a part of our agreement is that you will. Upgrade the water main so that to provide adequate water for your development.
I I think the I think the project is going to be bigger than that because are are we talking about? 40R. Development. Providing their own wastewater. I mean, you know, are we talking about them coming on to? I mean, the these these lines would be drawn together, right? If 40R is going to require wastewater piping, then back to our wastewater treatment. Facility that would go in at the same time as the as the as the water line. I I understand they're different lines, but I. I think that there's. A cost efficiency in doing them both at the same time.
There's a great cost efficiency in having somebody else pay for them.
Right, but they don't need to pay for the wastewater.
So so Jeff, we probably would not put a sewer line. Up. School street over the overpass. We would probably use the under the underground route. To the Mac for sewers to that portion of the LCD. So I think you can separate the two projects from that perspective sewer and water. I I do think you should you should insist on a. On that eight inch pipe for water up up school street. And whether or not. What whatever happens to the rest of the LCD. Regardless of it's a 40R or it's a it's a modified LCD, limited commercial district. We need we need better water to that. We need a loop system. And this would provide a major portion of that loop. And if there is a need for future sewer service, which there is no no sewer service in the LCD currently.
Right.
It would it would best. Follow that small water line route under 128 and tie into Mill Street in order to get back to our treatment.
Okay.
Greg, I I have a question. Does the developer know there's no water north of 128?
Yes.
Okay. So he he has probably built into his plans. He knows that's something that's going to have to be done.
Yeah, I think, you know, and and.
Yeah, the the math is there. We're still going to ask. We're still going to ask for more. But we need to know that. Okay, good.
I I think they might have had some. Short-lived hopes of tying into the smaller line that's already feeding.
Okay.
That's that's not something we would agree to.
Alright. Folks have enough on water line right now?
Oh, yeah.
Alright. Okay, so that was the last of the major structural issues that I wanted to try to attack tonight. And so unless there's other things that board members wanted to talk about right now, I was planning on going to the public and asking. For any comments with some constraints. So board members, not your last chance, but right now it is.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
I know that SLV is going to be retaining the property and having a company that they use manage the property. Do we need to? Is there any concern with how long SLV has been around? In terms of. If for some reason the company goes under. Is that anything that would be of concern to us?
Mr. Chairman, if if I'm, that's a that's a reasonable concern and I think. 40B, non 40B, it's something every regulatory board worries about when it enters into an agreement. In in this context, though, I I don't think you need to because the permit will run with the land. The permit will be affixed to the land. So if if this firm were to either go under or flip the permit, which is entirely possible. No bad intent meant to to the applicant, but that's what developers do. They get permits and sell them. Then the the board's condition, your conditions or the ZBA's conditions, run with the project, run with the land. So, no, I I I wouldn't worry about that. We can include sufficient conditions in your endorsement and certainly with the ZBA permit. As well as the DHCD letter is agnostic in many cases about the developer. It it so the real concern is does the do the conditions run with the lands? And the answer is yes, they will.
Okay, so additionally, along those lines, John, they these are built with the intention of being. Rentals and always include affordable housing that goes with it as well.
Yeah, so the latter part is as long as the project is out of compliance with zoning, which it is. The Supreme Judicial Court held in a case out of Wellesley that the units must remain perpetually affordable. In addition, there'll be a regulatory agreement that DHCD will require to be signed and recorded and the 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 ZBA will require that. That will require that the units remain perpetually affordable. It works like an affordable housing restriction, so the below market rate units will always be below market. At the whatever percentage of median income is negotiated. The the only thing then to be concerned about is any contractual conditions that you work out with the developer. How do you ensure that they're honored if the developer leaves or or flips? And then we we just bake in language errors or signs or any subsequent grantee of of their permit. So I I'm not troubled by that at all, and I think we should, the board should assume in all cases. That the developer you're negotiating with will not necessarily be the developer that builds the project. That may happen, it may not happen. You should just assume that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members done for now? Alright, so I'm gonna open this up to some comment from the public and I'm gonna structure a little bit. So I would. Like comments to be constrained as much as possible to what we've been really talking about tonight, namely. Conditions, possible conditions, and maybe some some procedural questions. I don't want to go too terribly far afield if I get a question which is. Too completely off topic. I'm gonna defer it. I'm we'll get an answer in writing and give it to you at a later point. But we could be here all night depending on the the categories of questions that people raise. Now. The chat is packed full of questions and comments. And I will at some point maybe go back and try to. Answer some of them. Some of them represent just conversation. But I did say at the outset that I wasn't going to be interrupting the meeting and going through. The chat in real time. The way we're going to actually handle this first part of the question and answer section. Is people who want to answer ask question, raise their hand in Zoom. And we'll address those first. And then if there's a reasonable period of time afterwards, I'll go back and try to answer some of the questions in the chat. Otherwise, questions in the chat, we'll try to answer ultimately and. Like a FAQ on the website, something along those lines. Alright, people who wish to speak.
Eli?
Yeah, yes.
Will I'm sorry to interrupt. Will this be run the same as a meeting where people are asked to? State who they are and where they live?
Uh, yes, it will be.
Just asking, thank you.
So anybody who wants to raise a hand, please do so and. Unmute yourself and identify yourself to be recognized.
Eli Sheila Hill.
Sheila Hill, go ahead.
It's actually a protocol. Suggestion, probably. I have a question in you already about the contents of the chat room. And I I see, I appreciate you feel you want to answer groups of questions in the chat room. But I I also would like to ask that. You you make the chats available to those of us who want to talk with one another and follow up. Points or concerns that we've had, apart from what you might decide to answer. I don't think you're responsible for responding to every chat. But those of us who have a concern may want to talk with each other. So if we can, if we're allowed to do that on our own outside of your responses, that would be great.
I will consider that. Won't commit to it right now, but I'll consider.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the public who wish to speak. Old fashioned speaking, it's useful.
Hi, this is Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. The question I have is that the town really needs to lay out scenarios of growth of the 40B alongside all the other planned growth. There's a lot of housing, the 40R, et cetera. When the town and developer are doing studies like traffic, infrastructure, emergency services. Et cetera, will this be done so that you we really understand the impacts and know how to negotiate the size of this development?
So. I don't think I can answer that. Categorically, I think to the extent that we can, I, yes, we will try to. Do that kind of analysis, but but here's the issue. So the 40B is in front of us and we can't say no to it. We have to manage it. And the context that we're trying to manage is what do we need to get in to avoid another 40B? And that actually puts some pretty good. Guidelines around what we actually have to analyze in the context of this particular 40B. So I'd like to say that, yes, we're going to analyze every aspect of what you're talking about, but I think that the analysis for this. Is going to be limited to what I just said, namely what what this 40B represents and and what we what the minimum. Level of of sizing of it is that we would need to avoid another 40B. So it it gives some constraints, but probably not the complete. Total analysis that you are hoping that we would get.
So, yeah, because there's there's a lot of talk of like if there is 50% development. Of say 40R, you've got traffic. Implications, you've got traffic lights that might need to go in versus if they just have the 40B on their own, maybe they won't need lights. You know, the all the infrastructure, all of the police and fire, you know, all of those considerations and that. It's sort of, it's almost like unfortunately, the timing of this, it would, you know, basically preclude. You know. Having more development that might benefit the town and benefit the tax basis better than this. So that we really all understand the costs. And there's a lot that could potentially be done with scenario forecasting. It's just something that should be considered, and I think the town needs to understand and really be aware of all the growth that is being projected or. Maybe not projected, but pursued right now.
Yeah, okay, that that does. I I think I was. I I thought you were maybe talking about something larger than just the including the 40R. In terms of the 40R, I think some thought has been put into this, and you're right, there is a bit of a timing issue here that's a little frustrating for us. If this, if we had the 40R in in place and and further down the line and then the 40B came in, it would be so much better for us in terms of trying to. Work these negotiations and and deal with this development, but that's not the hand we've been dealt. I think that this particular question is something that Sue Brown can answer better with. Over the next several weeks as we get a little bit further into our discussions with the 40R, and it's definitely something that we've been talking about. One thing that I can say. I think Sue, well, actually, I'll ask Sue Brown. Sue Brown, can you talk to? Where we stand with the state and recognizing. Housing from the 40B is contributing to the 40R.
Sure. Sure, without knowing the timing of everything, what we what we know or what we've heard from the state is that. If the 40B is within the boundary or the within the 40R district, which is has not been decided yet. If it is within that district, it could be counted. As the as part of or maybe all of the housing that would be that's required to meet the 50% housing goal of a 40R district. The timing is important because. We need to pass the 40R district before the 40B is permitted for that to count in all of its. In all aspects. So that's my understanding. We are in constant discussions with DHCD who is oversees the 40R. Project and. So we're working very hard to make sure that that we're doing things in the correct order and looking at these issues, but. Our understanding at this level is that it would be counted as the housing element in the 40R.
Okay, so I I I don't want to keep. Okay, so I, I, I don't wanna keep going on, but having, um, the town understand all of the different sites that are look, that are being looked at for development and the potential scope of them, I think will be important for getting a better understanding of, of the overall impact to the town. That's all, thank you.
Okay, uh, other members who, public who would like to speak?
Eli?
Gary Gilbert?
Yeah. Eleven Magnolia Ave, Gary Gilbert. Has the selectman heard from the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, to weigh in on their median percentage, uh, income that they're targeting for the affordable housing units there? I realize there's a trade-off, the less money the developer makes, probably the more they'll want to have more unit counts. But the eighty percentile is the very highest, the most expensive affordable housing that could be offered. I did a thumbnail calculation that they're projecting their one-bedroom units would be nineteen hundred and twenty-five a month, but if they moved it down to the sixty percentile, they would go to about fourteen hundred and forty dollars a month, which is a lot more affordable for schoolteachers, policemen, uh, our kids and other people. And maybe John could, Witten could weigh in, has a town asked for them to reduce the percentage target for the affordable housing portion?
So we haven't, uh, actually asked the developer to do anything yet. That with, uh, this is the, this, the phase where we're coming up with a list of things that we wanna ask them for. And, and we got a, um, a comment from, um, the Affordable Housing Trust late this afternoon on this particular topic. So we haven't had time to really, um, uh, assess it as board members and discuss it. But basically I did suggest reducing the AMI on as many units as possible. And that's something that we'll take up in, um, for discussion at a, a later meeting. There are a couple of, uh, we, we didn't talk about local preference and we didn't talk about AMI in this, this meeting, um, either. I, I think we'll, uh, postpone that to another working group session.
Could John just weigh in, um, is this a bargaining issue that, that, that occurs from time to time?
It, it, it is, Mr. Chairman, absolutely, and generally speaking, it, an applicant is willing to work with the town on those variable AMIs. And in some cases, it's as low as fifty percent of AMI, so yes, it's a perfectly reasonable ask. And especially working in conjunction with the Affordable Housing Trust and any regional entity that can identify what the AMI really should be. So yes, it's perfectly within the, the scope of what the BOS and ZBA can discuss with the applicant and require from the applicant, yes.
Did I say something? Hello? Can anybody hear?
Okay. Other members of the public?
Hello, no.
Eli, I hear someone trying to.
I do, but I can't hear.
Say something, it's very low.
I did see Bill Cross actually literally raise his hand, so I'm gonna recognize it.
Thanks, uh, yeah, I couldn't figure out how to use the Zoom function to, to raise my hand electronically. I used it.
Alright, it worked.
Uh, Bill Cross, thirty-one Smith Point Road. First, thank you, all of you selectmen for your service. I recognize that this proposal from SLB is a complex one and that it puts a significant burden on each of you. And you already have a lot on your plates. Uh, I also understand that on its face, SLB appears to be offering a silver bullet solution to the town's longstanding problem of insufficient affordable housing. That said, I do have some questions. Uh, given the importance of this decision to the long-term future of the town, broadly, what is the best process for, for you on behalf of all of us to make such an important decision? Is it really necessary for you to decide by January twenty twenty-one, maybe even early January, whether to formally endorse this proposal? Might you make a wiser decision with more time and not in a vacuum? But by looking more closely at alternative proposals, including those, uh, to which you alluded earlier, uh, M A H T has sketched out some very creative ideas, which I would love to see fleshed out more to make better use of existing sites. And, and maybe there are other things beyond town-owned sites that, uh, with more work and more time could be used for more affordable housing, housing units, which we certainly need. And I guess more broadly, might the town be strongest as it enters into any negotiation with SLB? If the town is willing to risk SLB's walking out and or threatening to go the unfriendly route? In most negotiations, I know, understanding the position of the counterparty is pivotal to the outcome. How much does the town understand about SLB's current site control? Uh, its rights to extend its option, uh, including, uh, the possibility that as the PNS suggests, uh, that site control lapsed on the twenty-sixth of September of this year? Are there extensions? And what other documents, given the nature of this public process? What other documents exist between SLB and the Brown family? Might the most democratic and effective approach to the town's insufficient affordable housing challenge be one that is comprehensive and is guided by wise town planning and ultimately depends in part on a town meeting vote? I, I think SLB's proposal is impressive in some ways, but might we do better as a town if we look at this in context? Uh, thank you very much for all that you're doing on this. And, uh, I look forward to hearing more as you continue to work through this complex proposal.
Okay, so, um, that was a lot, I'll try to address, um, as much of it as I can. Uh, some of it I won't be able to address definitively because there are a lot of mites in there. Um, so first of all, um, I will make a comment about your characterization as this potentially being viewed as a silver bullet. I would venture to guess that nobody on the Board of Selectmen views this as a silver bullet to solve our affordable housing problems. It doesn't do that. It, it solves the issue of whether or not we could, if, if it went through, is whether or not we could constrain another forty B development from coming into town. But let's face it, and although it would allow us to count if we, um, I got them down to a hundred and twenty units or even if they put in a hundred and forty, fifty-seven units, even if that happened, although we could count them as affordable housing units with respect to, uh, our percentage of, uh, as far as the state considers them affordable housing units. That's not how many actual affordable housing units there would be. And, um, even if we negotiate a good AMI number, um, uh, we're only getting at a, a very small percentage of what we actually need in terms of affordable housing to, um, stock in the town. As far as we can turn, tell from our, our current planning. So I don't think it's a silver bullet and I don't think anybody else here thinks it's a silver bullet. I think it's, uh, uh, just something that we're, we're forced to deal with right now. As to whether or not we might be better served by, um, uh, looking at alternatives and, uh, we're just letting this go to a hostile forty B. I think that, um, John Witten, uh, uh, addressed that fairly clearly in his opening remarks. And while you're right, we, we should, um, and do need to follow up and get as much information as we can about the, purchase and sale agreements with, um, the Browns. The town, um, and the Board of Selectmen are responsible for trying our best to negotiate, for, in a, in a, in a, you know, responsible manner to best see to the needs of the, um, town. And there is an argument, it says, if we simply didn't do the negotiation and said, oh, the heck with it, you can go ahead and make a, a hostile forty B out of it. That we would be, um, failing in our duties because we wouldn't be, we would not be making our best effort to negotiate, uh, the best deal that we could get for the town because, um, oh, we, we could end up exposing ourselves to a lot of legal expense and, um, hanging our hat on the odds that somebody else would prevail for us in, uh, an, a legal effort to forestall the developer. The developer is a large developer who's done a lot of forty B developments. There is a pretty reasonable presumption to be made that they haven't just, uh, dipped their feet in where they, they, without, uh, knowing what they, um, are getting into and that they would therefore proceed with a hostile development. So, um, uh, we, we have this problem and if, and I, I'm willing to, to entertain any, uh, strong suggestions for alternatives from, from, residents, from anybody. We have this problem that some of the, um, uh, notions that you're talking about, alternative, um, development projects that would enable us to say no to this developer to, uh, build our affordable housing stock to the point where we could refuse them. Planning around that is something that, um, and, and working around that is something that really needed to start a decade, two decades ago. We're behind, we have been behind on this for a long time and it's put us in a vulnerable position. Dealing with that, now that the forty B is already here, that may not be a very tenable suggestion. And while I'm really interested in hearing any creative thoughts that people have, so far, I haven't heard anything viable. If people can come up with something viable, I'll certainly entertain it. But, um, I don't see anything right now that isn't kinda wishful thinking, to be honest. So, um, yeah, interested in hearing more, um, from anybody who has real suggestions on that. Hard for me to, um, commit to, uh, that, that kind of line of attack as far as delaying things is concerned. So that, uh, there's this aspect of when we actually, uh, sit down and start negotiating with the developer and the answer is, I don't know when that exactly is going to be. I'm going to rely on, uh, John Witten, Town Council and, um, in part to help us, uh, through that process. And I'm also going to guide it a little bit in terms of whether or not we're actually ready, right? I mean, I, originally, when the developer came to us, uh, they had a timeline for when they wanted to do, uh, a proposal to us, a presentation to us and, uh, then maybe get some discussions with the public and then meet with them to do, work through, uh, a letter of endorsement. And, uh, I've already crossed off the first of those deadlines and those originally thinking, well, we might meet with them in November. And then I was thinking, well, we might schedule a meeting with them in December. And the more we chew through some of these large lists of conditions, the more I think it's gonna take us a little bit of time to work through those in a way that's gonna let us put a reasonable, um, proposal or back in front of the developer. I don't know how long that's gonna take. It's not something that's gonna take a year, it can't, the developer will walk and at that point we'll face a hostile forty B and then we won't have done our duty to the town. So, uh, that's kind of a long-winded answer, uh, it's, I, I, I hear you, um, and I'm, I'm certainly willing to listen, uh. That's what I got to say for now.
I, I guess I heard what John Witten said early on differently than you did and you know much better than I do, I don't know if he's still on the, on the Zoom. But I, I didn't hear him say that if it goes unfriendly, you've not done your service to the town. I see all of you as doing your service to the town selflessly and tirelessly. And if the developer goes in friendly route, that's the developer's choice, but you're gonna do the right thing, I believe. And I hope I'm right. And I'm hoping that I heard him right in saying that, you know, that does happen.
Yeah, you, you, you did, but you added some additional context and that was around, so there's, there's two aspects, right, there's our, our business of doing due diligence. But then you suggest the possibility of us taking additional time to really pursue some other alternatives. And, um, it's my assertion that right now, that I don't see any really viable alternatives in front of us that would, uh, allow us to say no to the developer. And, um, if I spent a lot of time chasing down that and holding off the developer while we chased down that, I questioned whether or not I was doing the right thing by the town. Is that distinction better?
I, I understand the distinction, yeah, thanks for the clarification.
This is a conversation that I suspect we will come back to and, um, I'm certainly willing to hear more. Anybody else?
Yeah, Denny Hall, uh, twenty Mascolino Street.
Sure.
Um, are there any other forty B proposed developments that have been brought forth to the town in the, in the last year or so?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else? Alright, so, um, I'm gonna go through and spend, uh, a few minutes talking, answering some of the straight-up questions from the chat. And then some of the other broader discussions, things that are, uh, I'll, I'll address later and we'll address them by putting together a FAQ on the website. And, uh, again, uh, I'll, I'll consider how we, uh, what might or might not present the actual contents of the chat to people. So, I'm going to address, uh, the tail end of the chat first. There was a question about when or not any of the selectmen have a conflict of interest with the developer. So I think the answer is categorical, no, we do not have a conflict of interest with the developer. If so, um, the board members would recuse themselves from discussions. And I will say that, um, uh, Board of Selectmen members have, have typically uh, been extremely conservative about recusing themselves from any discussion or any vote. They're remotely, um, you know, attached to or otherwise identifying themselves as having some familiarity with the people. So that's categorical, no. And, uh, a lot of these others, discussions back and forth and we've answered an awful lot of these discussions about fire and personnel. MECT did send a follow-up letter identifying concerns that was already discussed. There was a question about, um, town vote and whether or not this is presented to your town voter or whether or not, uh, it would. town vote, whether or not this is presented to a town voter, or whether or not it would be aspects of it would be. So again, the forty B development, this is not a pro proposal we asked for, or this is a developer coming to us essentially forcing our hand. None of it requires a town vote. The only thing that would require a town vote is if there were some aspect of the project, like we mentioned earlier on, where we were funding something on our own, like the water main. But the project itself and the agreements around it, none of that is subject to a town vote. I think the bulk of the rest of these questions have been answered over the course of the there are a bunch of, a bunch of them are opinion comments and a lot of discussion. Passing through all of it right now is honestly going to take a lot of time. So I think what we'll do is we'll assess the chat window, we'll we'll include comments and make make some frequently asked questions document available on the website and try to pack as many responses to topics that we find in there in into that.
Eli? Could you just men touch on a question that showed up a couple of times about the revenue from the project to the town and how reliable we consider their figures? The figures presented in the proposal.
So
You're welcome.
So I wouldn't say that we necessarily consider any of the figures in their proposal reliable, right? By I write by definition, we have to we we have some responsibility to treat with them with some skepticism. So the revenue numbers that are in the proposal, we are going to do peer reviews of those, and we're also gonna turn it all over to our finance committee in one way, shape or form, and ask them to review a bunch. So I I don't necessarily think the revenue numbers are are very reliable. I think they are probably fairly optimistic. And when we go through this review process, we will come up with our own estimate. And it's a good point because there's a suggestion that the revenue numbers would be therefore sufficient to cover the additional services to the town. That would factor into what we might ask, for example, for any support from the developer to the fire department budget. So it'll be a little bit of time before we can come up with an analysis, but yes, we'll definitely be doing our own.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public running follow up questions? Not in the chat? All right. For future meetings, I will discuss how we want to deal with the chat to see if we can deal with it a little bit more efficiently or turn it off. I'm not sure which of these two we're gonna do. It's it's not the most efficient mechanism for these meetings, so far as I can tell. Any board members have any other questions or comments tonight? All right, so on Monday, we will, in our forty B, part of the regular Board of Selectmen meeting, we'll be discussing a little bit of the business of how we want to package up request to other boards for analysis, and we'll be scheduling future meetings. So there are gonna be more meetings, not quite like this, not quite as chaotic, and less and less chaotic as we go through this with more frequency than I expected. And separate from the regular Board of Selectmen meetings, because they, these are pretty consuming meetings. And we will post those after we start figuring that schedule out on Monday. And I think that that's a good place for us to stop tonight. A motion to adjourn from Ms. Harrison, is that right?
Second.
Yes.
And second, and I'll say it was from Jeff Bobmer Turner.
Oh, I beat him. Come on.
Becky can have it, I don't care.
Becky can have.
How about we share?
There'll be more to come.
Any discussion?
One one comment on what you just said, Eli. I don't think this meeting was chaotic. I think this meeting was very well run, wrapping our arms around topics that are huge and and needed to be whittled into more manageable units, and I think we've made progress in that. So I don't think this was chaos.
Absolutely.
We can look beyond the borders of Manchester by to see the chaos.
Thank you. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Bobmer Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes, yes. Good night, folks. We'll see you again soon.
Thank you, Eli.
Thank you, Eli.
Thank you, Eli.
Good night, Eli.
Good night.